As the officer presiding over the meeting, we have a little problem here with one of our commissioners who refuses to abide by the authority vested in me to arrange the seating as how I see fit to best conduct a meeting. Unfortunately, Mr. Camarillo has challenged this authority or this right to rearrange the meeting, the seating, but in the interest of the public, we will proceed. And it's just unfortunate that we have people that don't know how to conduct themselves in a professional way and respect the mayor's position and office he holds. With that, let's please move on to the executive session. Would you please, City Secretary?
Mayor, I will state that it's with much respect to you, Mayor-
You're not allowed-
But you said we adopted a resolution-
You're not on the-
And we didn't adopt, so-
Mr. Camarillo, you're not going to abide by any rules of decorum here? Is that what you're saying?
I will abide by your rule if we can see where it says that-
Okay, please be least weight to be recognized.
Thank you, Mayor.
Would you be kind enough to please be weight to recognize?
Yes, Mayor.
And I will ask that of all commissioners to avoid what happened last time to where everybody's talking on top of each other. That's why I had rearranged the seating to have better control of the meeting, but obviously you don't care for that, but that's okay. I will conduct it the best I can under the circumstances, but I'm going to ask my commissioners not to talk at once and wait till you recognize before you talk. Okay, with that, City Secretary, would you please-
I'll read the call.
Read.
Notice of public meeting of the City Commission of the City of Brownsville. Pursuant to Chapter 551, Title 5 of the Texas Government Code, the Texas Open Meetings Act, notice is hereby given that the City Commission of the City of Brownsville, Texas, in accordance with Article 5, Section 12 of the Charter of said city, will convene an executive session, workshop, and regular meeting on Tuesday, July 3, 2007, at 5:00 p.m., 5:35 p.m., and 6:00 p.m. in the commission chambers on the second floor of the Brownsville City Hall Federal Building located at 1001 East Elizabeth Street, Brownsville, Cameron County, Texas. Executive session item A, discussion pursuant to Sections 551.087 and 551.072 of the Texas Government Code regarding economic developments and real property. Item B, discussion pursuant to Section 551.072 of the Texas Government Code regarding real property.
Mayor, I would move we go into executive session.
Second. We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Unanimes, thank you.
Mayor, for maybe for housekeeping purposes, would it be in the best interest when you say a first and a second, mention the commissioners' names? That way City Secretary would be able to-
That'd be fine.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we adjourn, where do you all usually adjourn to?
City commission.
City commission. And where is that?
Third order.
Good. Guess I'm new here.
I appreciate you coming here from Harlingen, and you may proceed.
Thank you very much for the invitation and the opportunity to speak. I'm Dr. Laura Robinson. I am a veterinarian, and I work with the State Health Department, the Department of State Health Services, out of the regional office based in Harlingen. And my responsibilities include the diseases that are transmitted between animals and humans. These include things like rabies, animal bites, and we also regulate and educate city officials, animal control officers, the public, medical professionals, and a variety of other members of the public regarding the laws that are in place regulating animal control, animal shelters, disease control, rabies, and those other types of topics. And so what I'd like to do is just give you a brief explanation of some of the things that the euthanasia moratorium might impact or has already impacted.
Have you discussed any of this with the city manager?
I've discussed it with the city attorney, but I have not had an opportunity to speak with the city manager.
Okay. Please proceed.
I have a packet of information provided that includes Texas statutes and codes, the Health and Safety Code that regulates animal control or animal shelters. Chapter 823 is the Animal Shelter Act. And basically, Chapter 823 is in effect in counties with a population of over 75,000, which includes Cameron County, and it regulates animal shelters, impoundment facilities, and rabies quarantine facilities in these counties. And it has particular standards which include that injured animals have to be separated from sick animals and healthy animals. Animals must be separated by sex, by size, by species. Animal control agencies and animal shelter operators must keep records on animals that are impounded or sheltered. And it also talks about having advisory committees, which the City of Brownsville does have an advisory committee for the Brownsville Animal Shelter. The standards that are applied for animal shelters are specified in the rules, the Texas Administrative Code, which I've included a copy as well, Chapter 169. Basically, the standards are in place to promote the sanitation of the facility, the health and the safety of the animals, as well as the personnel that work in the shelter. And these standards also pertain to all impoundment facilities in the state and all rabies quarantine facilities in the state. Our department inspects these facilities, the quarantine facilities in particular, once a year. And Chapter 823 pertaining to animal shelters requires an inspection by a veterinarian other than a Department of State Health Service veterinarian once a year as well. There are standards relating to the space allotted to animals. It's not a specific number because different shelters have kennels that are built to different sizes based on economics most of the time, and dogs come in all different sizes, dogs and cats. And so in some instances, a large dog might sit comfortably in a cage, or three small dogs, and it's really up to the trained animal shelter employees, the personnel, animal control staff, that would determine how many animals fit in a kennel, how many animals fit in a facility. The space requirements include that the animal has to have enough space to get up, lie down, stand in a normal position, and be able to remain clean, not have to lie in its own feces or urine, and that their food and water also be able to remain clean. And usually, those are the most serious problems when you have overcrowding, is that there's too many animals in there. It's difficult to keep the kennels clean because the animals are defecating and they're becoming soiled from having to lie in the waste, and it's difficult to keep their food and water clean. This also promotes disease transmission within the facility. As you all probably know, the stray animals that are running loose often are not vaccinated against any of the communicable diseases, including distemper and parvovirus. And so as all these animals come in to a situation where they're in contact with a lot of other animals, their immune status may be compromised by stress, by malnutrition, by other diseases. And so being able to keep animals separated, isolated, and in uncrowded conditions helps decrease disease transmission as well. So that would pertain to your facility, which is an impoundment facility, meaning that animals that are in violation of city ordinances or state law are picked up and placed in the facility. The rabies quarantine section as well, where animals that have bitten a person or scratched a person and potentially exposed someone to rabies are placed there for the 10-day observation period. And it also applies to animals that are held there for adoption. And so you have a mix of owned, unowned, vaccinated, unvaccinated, sick, healthy, just a variety of animals that are being placed in this situation. And so by law, it's not allowed to become overcrowded because of the disease transmissions and other situations that would harm the animal's health or the employee's health by working in those conditions. The other thing that is affected by euthanasia moratoriums would be the animals that have bitten or otherwise exposed a person to rabies. The moratorium did not specify which animals. In the state of Texas, we have high-risk species for rabies, which include raccoons, skunks, foxes, bats, and coyotes. And so if one of these animals were to be, to have bitten a person, they would need to be picked up by animal control, and those animals need to be euthanized and submitted for testing immediately. If it's a dog or a cat that inflicts severe bites to the head, face, or neck, the state law also allows that those animals be euthanized and tested immediately for rabies to ensure that the person can initiate rabies post-exposure treatment as soon as possible if needed. So those animals may or may not be affected by the euthanasia moratorium, and the people, the public health would be affected in that sense as well. And then another aspect of animals that are picked up or turned in to animal control facilities, impoundment facilities, animal shelters, are the animals that are already sick or injured. For instance, when people call to have their pet picked up because they know it's ill and they cannot afford to take it to a veterinarian for treatment or euthanasia, many times they rely on animal control services, or the animal 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 for that purpose. That's not regulated in any way by state law, but it is something that happens. It's one of the sources for animals coming into the animal shelters. The state law does require persons that euthanize animals in the custody of the animal shelter to be trained and certified in animal euthanasia. And there's only two methods of euthanasia that are allowed for dogs and cats. This includes injectable euthanasia or euthanasia by carbon monoxide. There are methods available for other species of animals, and those are based on the American Veterinary Medical Association recommendations. So those are some of the state laws that would affect animal euthanasia as practiced by impoundment facilities, animal shelters, or rabies quarantine facilities. And I've included copies of most of these things, as well as a blank copy of our inspection form for shelters, impoundment facilities, and shelter facilities. And there are a variety of things that are on there, mainly structural, but we also collect information on the number of animals that are housed in the facility on the day of inspection and the number of cages that are available for those animals. And actually, if y'all have questions, I'm not quite sure what my timing is.
We're running pressed on time, Doctor, but really, thank you for your presentation, and that we are going to be taking this up in action items. And I think right now we have one more presentation, and we are going to be moving along.
Actually, Commissioner-
Thank you for your time, and thank you for your presentation.
Excuse me, Commissioner.
Commissioner. May I be recognized?
Of course.
Dr. Robinson, again, thank you for being here. And just one quick question. Considering the document that was passed by the commission last week, well, did we do it right? Is there a better way to make sure that we can have it both ways so that we can address this issue? I hope that you would be able to lend yourself to the mayor, to the animal shelter advisory committee, as well as our staff, to help us work together, to put something together that would be feasible and would work for everyone?
As I mentioned earlier, I, our office does provide advice, training, any sort of consultation that y'all would like-
Okay.
-with regards to implementing policies, procedures, or other actions that would help promote the public health and be in concordance with the state laws that are in place. And please feel free to call on my office. I know I've provided training to the Humane Society when they had questions about animal shelter standards, and we provide training routinely for animal control officers, so-
Have you been to our facilities already?
Yes, sir. I've inspected that facility.
Let's try to follow some more, like I said earlier. Let me recognize you so we can have some more, okay? Charlie, please go ahead. I'm sorry, Mr. Atkins. I ask you, are we in compliance with our animal shelter right now as far as facilities?
Yes, sir. Um, the-
Something was passed, something was passed a couple of months ago mandating, the state's mandating cities to have more space and eligible kennels. I've, well, something was passed, right? I know the statu, state requirement to where pets have to be evacuated with their owners in case of a hurricane, but I guess the question should be to our Assistant Director, Joe Inahosa. Joe, would you please come to the podium, please? Joe is our Assistant Director, is that right, Charlie, City Manager?
Yes, one of the Assistant Directors in the Health Department, yes, sir.
Okay. And Joe Inahosa, you're in charge of the dog pound, right?
Yes, Mayor and Commissioner. And hearing Dr. Laura's presentation, obviously, her guidance is going to be crucial to abide by the state statutes, but there's some implementation guidelines that we will be working with her to make sure the policies and procedures follow those statutes. Shouldn't be a problem.
Okay, and we are in compliance right now, Joe?
Yes.
Okay, we're in compliance right now?
Yes, sir.
Okay. So I guess it's not an issue. To you, is it an issue to you?
No, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Mayor, if I may.
Sure.
I guess to me, I believe the issue is, and I don't know if you could clarify this, but when the commission passed the rest, the document last meeting, euthanizing of animals, all animals, and I think that's where I wanted really some, probably some clarity, but so that we develop something that we know will work. And so I know we had some issues with that, and I know you all are working extremely diligently, so that's basically my concern, and to hear from Dr. Robinson that she'd be willing to help us, so.
We have worked with the mayor to make sure that we understood the directive, and we've established some guidelines for shelter personnel so they know what's expected of them and how they can best inform the public of what we're doing. But the guidelines are a little more specific as to the moratorium, obviously, sick, animals beyond redemption, the most humane thing to do is euthanize them, vicious animals that are danger to the public.
That's what you-
Obviously, those are-
And that should be amended in the current-
We've got, we've established some procedures, and we've presented them to the shelter personnel, and we can present them in a formal presentation if that's the commission's wish.
Also, for purpose of clarification, it was clearly made at the last meeting that euthanasia would be the last resort.
Yes.
Okay? And I know there was a lot of disinformation out there, creating panic. People were even calling the vets, telling them that we weren't going to pick up the carcasses, but that wasn't even an issue. Pets, I mean, of course, the vets, you can understand, were a little upset by it, but that was not even an issue. Nobody's going to adopt a dead dog or a dead cat, I assure you. The other issue that came up was that by someone else trying to undermine, I think, this thing, was that rabid dogs were protected under the euthanasia policy. Well, you know, because somebody might adopt a rabid dog, meaning rabies, a state law supersedes local law anytime, okay? So state law, I think, would prohibit us from adopting out a dog with rabies or a cat with rabies. And besides, I don't think anybody, the good citizens of Brownsville, would want to adopt a dog with rabies. So I mean, those were some of the issues that were brought out. I think it was lack of information. Mr. Kabler, I want to thank you for working so hard with Mr. Inahosa and the people at the animal shelter. I mean, there was chaos, I can tell you. But anything new, any change brings about that, you know, and there was clarity, put it into the subject. Nobody got fired, like they were saying, at the animal shelter, as far as I know, unless you fired somebody, Charlie. Did you fire anybody?
No, no, sir. That has-
So nobody's been fired, like the word was being spread around? And animals are being picked up, and we're making room for animals. I mean, I spent two days at the flea market, as Joe can tell you, in code enforcement, was at the flea market closing down the illegal sale of dogs by ordinance. I was there adopting dogs out with Brownsville SPCA, and my birthday was Sunday, but I spent all day Sunday and Saturday, and I challenged all the commissioners to go out there and help also. And we adopted out, I think, like 14 dogs, and we referred people to the animal shelter to make room for more, for more. Those kind of efforts, also the rescue organizations like K-Tex and Leguano Madre were not allowed to take dogs out, which they do to make, help us make room to deal with the overpopulation of dogs and other pets, domesticated pets. And that was because bad information was out there. They were, they are allowed to help us alleviate the stress there. It's been a problem before I even got here, the overpopulation of pets, and it's been a problem before I got here that the dog pounds up to capacity, or, you know, it's been a problem before I even got here. So we're trying to deal with the issue, at least, you know, we're making an effort to it. And I want to commend right now publicly Joe Inahosa, the Assistant Director there to the Health Director, Charlie Kabler, Charlie Yala, all the staff at the dog pound for their efforts, Brownsville SPCA for trying to make this, you know, make it a little better for domesticated pets. Euthanasia should be the last resort, and we should all value life. That's important to understand. God gave us life, and He also gave us the ability to hunt, to eat, not to just kill We should try to look for alternatives because, you know, in our society, we're having problems right now where children are killing adults. Adults are killing their wives and their unborn, and that comes, that's just all about us as a society. We are so dis-synthetized that killing is becoming second nature for some, and we need to stop that by setting a good example, valuing life, and that's what we're trying to do. And I want to thank you, Joe, again, for all your work. I know you put your Sunday in, your Saturday in, and everybody else. And I challenge the commission there to volunteer some time with Brownsville SPCA. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mayor.
And thank you, Ms.-
Thank you, Dr. Robinson.
Ms. Robinson. Okay, it's not an action item, let's go to item B.
Oh, do we want to go ahead and do the pledge of allegiance and invocation?
Do we need a glass?
I'm sorry.
This is a workshop?
My mistake, I'm sorry. Item B is discussion pursuant to Section 551.07, I'm sorry, excuse me. I'm going too far down on my agenda.
Discussion pursuant to-
Discussion regarding city property adjacent to the Gladys Porter Zoo and abandoned by the railroad.
Thank you. Carlos Yala?
Thank you.
Members of the City Commission, tonight we have with us the operating people from the zoo and some of their board from the Vali Zoological Society. The zoo has approached us and asked what we were intended to do with the land that was abandoned where the rails used to pass. And I don't know, probably if you'll give us another, that's the property directly behind the zoo, and they're asking for the city to designate that as new parkland, so, and for us to let them, let their zoo grow into that area. Basically speaking, I think our engineering department with Carlos Lasta and Eddie are here, and they've checked the right-ofways and the ownership, and yes, it has been abandoned by the railroad, and that does revert back to the City of Brownsville. The piece that you see up on the top is an old abandoned rail spur that they also plan to incorporate, and Dr. Birchfield, Patrick Birchfield, will probably have a better explanation than I can give you as to what they want to do. The issue becomes that the city designated as new parkland, and they will have, they have ways of obtaining funds, grants, to be able to grow into that area. And, Doctor?
Do you have the survey meets in Brownsville or any of that?
That is a recent survey that was done by Jim Rose.
The reason I'm asking is because this is a discussion item, it's not an action.
I understand that, and-
So we can't do nothing tonight? You're just making a presentation?
No, but that's where we're headed.
Okay.
As to be able to present it to you at another time with all the legal technicalities that it takes to transfer the land.
Does anybody have a problem with this, conveying this piece of property to the zoo?
No, sir.
Well, I don't think we have a problem. Just bring it back as a discussion item, I mean, an action item, next time we'll do it.
I think if you could just explain a little bit, ask you what-
Oh, okay. You prepared for this, Pat? I guess, let's give you the five minutes.
Well, Mayor, Commission, we certainly appreciate all the support of the Gladys Porter Zoo over the years, and in our endeavor to continue to bring the City of Brownsville and the Rio Grande Valley a dynamic and ever-improving Gladys Porter Zoo, we're recommending or requesting that the city allow us to expand into this area. If we could have that first overhead back up in front of us, please? Okay, that'll work just fine if I can. If you look right here, you see that same triangular piece that we just looked at. Right now, the zoo occupies this area as well as this area across what was the railroad right-ofway. Basically, what we're asking the city to do is to be able to close this off from this point to this point to create additional zoo exhibit. This currently is a zoo storage building, which we wish to relocate to this corner. In other words, we'll put up another structure there. And what we propose to do is turn this into our Education Department's South Texas Discovery Center. One of the things that zoo patrons have asked for time and time again is that we feature more of our local wildlife. And what we're proposing to do, if we could have the next couple of transparencies up there. Next one? Keep going. There we go. And this is a very crude drawing, and I apologize to our board president, who is a commercial artist. But basically, what we would be able to do is bring people from the main zoo grounds out into a nice shady green space. And one of the things the zoo lacks, particularly on hot sunny days, is a lot of nice shady area for families to recreate. And what we want to do is make this a nice green area featuring a native edible and herbal plant display. If we expand into the, what's now a current warehouse building and make this our new discovery center, we'll have exhibits featuring South Texas plants and wildlife. This will also double our present Education Department classroom space. Right now, we are teaching classes, summer classes, and other programs in virtually every nook and cranny of the zoo. And by moving our education function to this larger building, which is approximately 75 by 125, we'll be able to minimally double our education classroom space. In addition to that, we'll be able to create a nice outdoor area for students coming to the zoo to do outdoors projects, native plant projects, growing plants for the animals at the zoo for enrichment purposes. It'll give us a lot of much-needed resource, and we think it's going to be a big improvement to the zoo and also to the City of Brownsville. So we ask you to consider this, and we'll come back to you with a more complete-
Pat, the zoo hasn't discarded the fact that it might in the future, if future land purchases are made to bring the elephants back to the zoo?
We'll never discard the possibility of wanting to bring elephants back, but I just want to be straight up and above board with the commission. The City of Los Angeles just spent $70 million on their new elephant exhibit, and PETA says it's not sufficient. And we're talking about at least an acre and a half per elephant. So we would have to have at least several acres of land to be able to bring elephants back to come in compliance with our national standards, the group that accredits us, the Association of Zoos and Aquariums. So, no, we won't say that we won't ever get them back, but we'll have to have considerably more land, and I don't know what direction that would be.
You'd have to buy those houses around there, and even then, you'd have, you know-
Well-
That would not be cost feasible.
That wouldn't be cost feasible, and that's a wonderful neighborhood there, and we've got really good neighbors, and they enjoy being by the zoo, so.
Okay.
Anyway, thank you very much for your time and all your help with the zoo in the past and in the future.
Thank you, Pat. Okay, 610, please rise.
I pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. Under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one and indivisible.
Let us pray. Our Father, we thank you for the freedom that you've given to us. And as we celebrate our independence, may we remember that everything has a cost. And I pray, Father, that you would help us to remember those who have gone before us. We thank you for our commissioners and our new mayor and we ask your blessings upon each of them, that you would give them the wisdom and knowledge and discernment to lead our city. And Lord, I thank you that you've given to us a wonderful city with a lot of wonderful people. And I just pray that this commission would continue on touching others, not only here in our city, but further in other cities. So, Lord, we ask for wisdom and knowledge in serving you. In your son's name we pray, amen.
Mr. Phillips? Please be seated. Item one.
Employee of the month.
Mayor, uh, members of the commission, uh, if I may, I want to introduce the employee of the month for July, Laura Hernandez. Laura is, uh, uh, in, uh, under the supervision of our human resources, uh, department. And they, she's under the direct supervision of Lydia Gonzalez, who is on vacation this week, so she's not here to, uh, be with her. Uh, Laura's been with the city since, uh, the year two thousand, seven years. She's worked on the, at the human resources department that entire time. And simply put, Laura helps us in assuring that all, all our new employees are processed correctly. And in fact, she also assures that, uh, all employees, potential employees that, uh, are applying for the city are, are, uh, properly processed. And they're also, uh, uh, obtaining all information in relation to the possibility of them being employed is given to, to me and the directors to, to assure that we hire the best employees possible. Uh, she's, uh, dedicated to, to her job. She's here daily, walking the halls, making sure that everything is done correctly. Uh, she visits with us, uh, spends long hours making sure that she finishes her assignment and, uh, we really appreciate her. And, uh, for her efforts, she is the employee of the month. She gets a plaque.
Can you please read the plaque, what it says?
In recognition for outstanding services rendered to the city of Brownsville for the month of July, presented on the third day of July two thousand and seven, for, as her award for the employee of the month for July.
Congratulations.
Of course, she gets, uh, she gets a cap and, and the employee of the month pin. Uh, when Lydia gets back, we'll take her to lunch. And, uh, she's eligible for the employee of the year.
Please invite me, I'd be more happy to join you. We value our employees and we thank you for the work you do. And we hope that all our employees try as hard as you do to do a good job and they're happy about their work and they're, they're, they're part of the team here. Thank you, Laura, for what you do.
And she's also eligible for the employee of the year at our banquet in December, when we make that decision.
Great, great. Thank you again. Congratulations, Mr. Hernandez.
I just want to, uh, say that it's a great honor to be employee of the month. And I really believe that I need to share this honor with also my fellow HR specialist, Mary Delion. So, this is for her as well.
Thank you, thank you. No one's a leader by themselves, they require support, she's very right. Thank you. Uh, item two.
Item two, consent agenda items A through C.
Do we have a motion for, uh, A through C?
May I have a correction in the minutes? I just want to make sure we're, we're correcting the minutes, there's corrections out with the committee commissioner.
Which ministry are you referring to? I wasn't here, so, uh, this has to do with Mayor Trevino, so, you know, I will abstain on that.
Okay. I just wanted to know that they'll be, they'll be included for the record.
I think, uh, we were here, I wanted to see if we could pull out, um, item, consent agenda item C. I had spoken to Mr., um...
We have first, uh, I think something on the minutes, right?
The minutes first?
Yeah, the correction.
Oh, yeah, a correction?
I want to make sure that's included for the record.
Okay.
Let's, let's, okay, what, what do you want corrected?
Which correction?
Hey, but you can't understand, we, we did a meeting. No, but, no, I didn't, no, I didn't do that meeting, it was, uh, Mayor Trevino. This last meeting, you did this, this last meeting, right?
Mayor, this last meeting.
Talking about this last meeting, you did.
It says appro- excuse me, uh, it says approval for the June nineteenth and June twenty-sixth.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay. Okay, so then I'd ask that, that the meeting, which I intend to be taken out and tabled for the next, uh, so we can re- I can read it and go over it. Is that okay?
Can I put out an agenda item, just, I had some information from Mr. Grady Deaton that he had brought to my attention.
Let's, uh, let's, let's do his first.
Okay, yeah, let's do his first.
Do you want a table?
Well, the mayor's requesting a table, I will second that.
Just, just the, just the minutes of where I, I participated, okay?
No, the June twenty-sixth.
The twenty-sixth, that's what I was running in.
To review.
Yeah, let's get yours.
The minutes that are in question are the June, the, the minutes in correction are June twenty-sixth, last Tuesday's, uh, minutes.
Okay, so that's the one, so that's the one I want to table?
Yes, and I will second that.
Okay, so, okay, we have a motion.
You're tabling the June twenty-sixth?
Correct.
Okay, who's, who made the motion?
I'm, I'm making the motion.
Mr. Camarillo makes the motion, who makes second?
By tabling the June twenty-sixth, all decisions that were made at that meeting are being tabled until the...
No, 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 they're not being tabled, they're just, the minutes are being reviewed for accuracy, that's it.
Correct.
Okay, who's seconded?
I'll second that, but I'm...
Mr. Sisnetos is seconded? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? I, I'm for...
Now, just for discussion purposes, Mayor, can we discuss items, uh, consent agenda item C?
Certainly.
For those meetings? Mr. Grady Dean had some information he had brought to my attention.
This is not public, all right?
I think we can pull it out. Can you, Jim?
If, um, if the commission, if any of the commission members, uh, ask that us, that us, that one of the consent items be set aside for discussion, then it, then, yes, that can be done.
Well, this is second reading, isn't it?
Yeah, he's just going to bring some information, all you have to do is listen.
Okay. Any, any more discussion, anybody have any problem with this?
I just have a question, will...
Likewise.
May I, please?
I don't think the election will be seconded.
If, if we allow Mr. Grady to, to speak for three minutes, will that, does that mean that then everyone else...
I don't think we can allow him to speak, uh, city attorney?
Um, well, Mayor, you, of course, are presiding over the meeting. I mean, I, if the commission, typically the way it's handled is if the commission by consensus wants to allow someone to speak, then that may, that may be done.
Okay.
In this case, the item is up, it's already been approved once, it's up for second, uh, and final approval by consent. If any of the commission members wants to, uh, single it out and discuss it, then that's...
It's going to be tabled anyways, if you don't want to see it happen to be tabled.
Excuse me, excuse me, excuse me a minute. So, right now, it does, it does, it's not going to affect it if we table it, right, the second and final reading? It can be brought at the next commission meeting, is that right, city attorney?
Uh, yes, sir, that's correct. It, it just wouldn't pass in a final form because it's approved on the second...
So, if we're going to do that, do I, do I hear a motion to table this?
I just want to bring item C up for discussion if we could.
Okay, so then it's not, it's not, it's not for tabling, okay.
Uh, I move to approve B and C of the consent agenda item.
He says he hasn't re- he needs to review them.
It was tabled.
That was tabled.
C wasn't tabled, A was tabled. I moved to...
Part of, no, wait, part of A was tabled?
Yes, part of A. I moved to approve B and C of the consent agenda item and table A.
The remainder of A.
The remainder of A.
Okay, we have motion by Charlie Axon to, to, to second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed?
Hold on one second.
Are we approving C already?
We're approving the travel.
Yes. Well, I'm trying to pull item C out so we can bring it up and discuss it.
Wait a second, that's what I keep asking you all for a motion.
Dean's right here, if you can stand up, Mr. Dean.
I'm, I'm sorry, but you, I asked you for a motion and you didn't make it. So, he made the motion to approve all of the minutes except A, okay, except the June twenty-sixth. And he made a motion to approve B and C and it was passed, uh, so...
I haven't voted for C.
Okay, well, are you...
I'm trying to pull it out.
Are you against or for? Are you for or against?
I'm against C.
Okay.
I'm asking that it be pulled out as, as it reads here, any com- city commissioner, so requests in which event the item will be removed from the consent agenda.
You have to have consensus, you don't have a consensus. And you, you didn't make the motion, I was asking you for the motion, uh, okay, let's move on to the next one.
You did ask.
Yeah, I did ask, I'm sorry.
That's all I'm saying, for the record, do we want to let him speak or not?
It's already done, Commissioner. I'm sorry, I, I asked you for the motion, I'm sorry. I really am sorry.
Mayor, may I, uh, just be sh- as a housekeeping matter, may I just be sure that I understand procedure and what we're doing? If, if I understand correctly, the motion was to approve all of the consent items except for the second portion of item A?
Yes.
Correct.
The vote and, just to be sure, Estella, do you have the, the correct vote that was...
Uh, yes, I do. Uh, but I'm under the understanding that if the consensus of the commission is for an item to be pulled out of consent, it can be done, especially since all he wants is to have someone speak...
That's it.
And bring up a point. After that, then they could go ahead and vote on C as well.
That's all I'm asking for respectfully.
I think that that's correct procedurally what occurred, but the motion was made that they vote on the items and the seconded and there was a vote. And if my understanding is...
That's it.
But you said not to approve the second part of A?
Yeah.
Well, C falls on the second part of A.
No, it doesn't, C, C.
That's C.
He, uh, he made the motion that included C, unfortunately, that's where it went down, the vote.
The official meeting of June twenty-sixth.
We must move on to the next one. Um, board and commission appointments, item three, please. City secretary? Item three.
Consideration and action to appoint or reappoint seven members to the Heritage Council.
Uh, Mr. Goodman?
Mr. Mayor, commissioners, um, pleased to be here tonight, uh, with the nominees, uh, from the Heritage Council. In accordance with the heritage ordinance, uh, whenever we have vacancies or reappointments, it's the job of the, of, in accordance with that ordinance, of the Heritage Council to come up with nominations. As you can see, the nominations are in very specific categories. Those are regulated by the Texas Historic Commission because we are a, a certified local government. And so, what we bring to you is the nominations, the nominees of the Heritage Council for these positions. Um, I know there were some questions last week about whether folks were known or not, or, uh, whether the commissioners knew who they were or much about them. So, what I've done is I've, I've, uh, these folks were kind enough to come with us. Uh, Mark Clark is here, Larry Loff, Priscilla Rodriguez and John Chozy. Uh, you're certainly welcome to ask them any questions you like, I think, if you don't know. I'm sure you know most of these people and their reputations. Uh, several of them have served on the committee for many years.
Is your move to reappoint all seven? I, I, I move to approve all seven.
I'll second that.
We have a motion by Mr. Akerson and a second by Mr. Camarillo. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Mayor, now, we do have a slot and, uh, Mr. Goodman, correct me if I'm wrong, the, the ex officio, which usually includes a commissioner, former commissioner, Commissioner Sally Arroyo was sitting on there. If possible, I'd like to nominate Commissioner Troyani to take her place.
Okay, but can we do it right now?
Second?
Jim, can we do it right now?
We'd just like to replace, uh, Commissioner Arroyo.
This is not the time to do it. We have to put it on the agenda, no?
For the Heritage Association.
Ex officio.
It's on us.
Because here, the a- action item was to reappoint, not to appoint a new member.
To appoint or reappoint.
Reappoint.
Yeah.
Point or reappoint?
Or reappoint.
So, can we do it? Can we go back? Why, why don't we do this? Why don't we ha- make a motion to reopen this and then make the, uh, reappointment?
Make the motion to reopen.
It, it is stated in our cover letter, by the way, to the commission.
Okay, can I have a motion to reopen this?
Second.
Second.
Motion by Camarillo and, and second by Mr. Troyani. Okay, now, can you state your motion to appoint, uh, reappoint the, the members recommended and appoint Mr. Troyani?
I'm going to reappoint the members that are currently before us, as well as Commissioner Troyani as the ex officio.
Second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Okay, carries unanimously, thank you.
Did you get those, Estella?
Yes.
Okay, item number four.
Item number four, consideration and action to appoint one alternate member to the Planning and Zoning Commission.
Okay, do we have any alternate, alternate member in mind?
We commissioned this member, must reside outside the city limits of Brownsville.
Okay, so he's got to be in the ETJ?
That's correct.
Okay. Uh, is there any questions? Can I have a nomination?
I moved to table this because, uh, the person that we had in mind lives inside the city limits.
Okay, we have a motion by Mr. Akinson to table, do I have a second?
Second.
Who seconded it?
I did.
Okay, Mr. Leo Garza seconded it? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Carries unanimously. Item number three, no, five, I'm sorry.
Item number five, consideration and action to appoint new members to the Capital Improvements Advisory Committee.
I would like, uh, this time to, uh, appoint, uh, Leanne Greer to the, to the committee because, uh, she served dutifully in the past committee, she never missed any meetings that I know, that I can remember. And she has a lot of experience that she brings to the new committee. And I would like to put her on that board if it's at all possible. Certainly.
It was my understanding that at the last meeting...
Where's the mic, Commissioner?
It was my understanding at the last meeting that we had voted on kayak members. And I believe you had made a motion to dissolve the kayak, the old kayak. But I don't think there was ever a vote taken on that. So, essentially, at this point, I believe we have two kayak committees in existence. So, I think there's some housekeeping matters that we need to take care of. And additionally, I believe that there was an issue as to, uh, an appointment of, uh, Marcus Barza. He had a majority vote and I believe he would be a standing member. I was looking at the minutes of the meeting, it didn't show that he had been appointed. I spoke with the city secretary regarding this issue. Uh, we need confirmation as to whether or not he was in fact voted on to the kayak. And which kayak are we actually talking about? So, if we could clarify those before we start.
I believe, Mr. Troyani, that the legal, uh, advice, uh, Mr. Goza?
Um, Mayor, we're on item five, I'm sorry, I, we're talking about the kayak. And was the motion made, if I understood correctly, to appoint Leanne Greer?
Yes.
Uh, in response to Mr. Commissioner Troyani's question, my, uh, understanding is that when the recommendations and the votes were taken at the last meeting, city secretary's office went back and reviewed the tape and audio tape, videotape and tried to ascertain that the election had been properly done and that the, uh, the members had in fact been selected by a majority vote. If the question is, can the commission come back now and reappoint a different, um, a different member? Then I guess we have that authority, there's no...
I can appoint another member to the, to the kayak committee.
Well, if I can clarify my question...
Okay, uh, Mr. Troyani has a question.
Okay, it's, there's two questions. First, the mayor had made a motion to dissolve the kayak and there was not a vote on it. On simply the mayor's motion, is the kayak committee dissolved?
You don't need to dissolve it, the members that were on the committee were replaced and therefore that is a new standing kayak. You don't, you don't dissolve the kayak, the new voting members, the new members were voted in or were...
Let me ask, um, uh, my question was addressed specifically, specifically to Mr. Goza.
Well, that's how I understand it, if, if the member, if the, uh, we made an ordinance that said that there would be, uh, an, a number of, uh, kayak members and I think it's implied that if you appoint new members, that that has the effect of replacing the existing ones.
Because a vote doesn't need to be taken on that issue, it's simply, if he dissolves it, he dissolves it.
If that dissolves, it's replacement.
I think, as you said, that there was, um, uh, some discussion concerning dissolving it, but the no official action was taken to dissolve it. I understood what was done procedurally was to appoint different and new members to the kayak.
Okay, so then now that the new members have been appointed and then it becomes a question on Mr. Espada's vote, that was a three to two vote with two people abstaining, so that would be a majority vote, correct?
No.
I did abstain, I did abstain.
Uh, based on the minutes that I've seen?
I have, uh, I have the ayes as Commissioners Sisnetos, Camarillo and Troyani for Marcus Barza. I have the nays as Mar- as Mayor Almada and Commissioner Atkinson. And I have abstentions by Commissioners Longoria and Garza.
Therefore, there being three votes, not four, the motion does not count.
There would be three votes for and two against, that would be three to two with a quorum of five voting. So, that would be a majority with quorum.
Well, there were seven members present, so the, the quorum requirement would have been met as five members. But if there were seven members voting on the issue, then it would require a majority of the seven.
But there weren't seven because two people abstained. And the only reason to abstain, once you abstain from something, you're not making a decision one way or another on it, so you'd simply have a majority.
If you had seven members sitting on the commission that were actually voting.
But they did, two decided not to vote, since they decided not to vote, not to make a decision on it one way or another.
Let me make this easy for everybody. Obviously, you know, I don't want to continue with this all night long. Let's, let's go back and let's reappoint the whole committee. We'll bring it up next week, that way there's no confusion. And we just submit a list and appoint new members. If, if, if that's all, what y'all want to do? That's what y'all want to do?
No.
Okay. Then this abide by the legal councils.
He's asking a question.
I'm asking a question.
But then his pardon-
This abide by legal councils, uh, conclusion there.
Sir, I, I don't know of, uh, controlling legal, uh, authority one way or the other. They would say if, if there are seven members present and only five cast votes, if you would take the majority of the five, or if you would re, still need the majority of the seven.
So it stands.
My understanding, and again, it's, this, I did not expect this question. I haven't researched it specifically, but, um, my understanding would be that a, a vote of, if you're abstaining from the vote, that you are nonetheless present in the, in the forum, and that you, uh, the fact that you abstained from the vote wouldn't change the fact that you're there and that you're a voting member, and that a quorum of that governing body would still, or rather, a majority of that governing body would still be required to take official action. So I would think that it would require a majority, uh, of the commission that was seated and present in order to, to take official action, and not just a majority of the, of the members who chose to cast a vote.
But if you abstain, Jim, isn't that a non-vote?
No, it's not a non-vote. Abstain is not a non-
It's not a vote.
It's a non-yay or nay.
It's just, it says it's, it says that it's not taking sides on any issue.
Jim?
There's still seven members. My, you know, if you're off the cuff, my, my, um, response would be that I believe you need a majority of the, of the governing body that's present at that meeting. And that if, it, that it requires a, a majority of the governing body to take action, and if the majority is not-
That's enough, uh, Mr. Goza. I think, I think we've got enough in this stance there. Now, the, the, um, recommendation is here to appoint Leanne Greer to the kayak.
I have a question, Mayor, if I may, real quick.
Please.
Um, this board is comp, should be composed of seven members, Ben?
You, you can, it's seven now. You can amend it and make it more if you want.
Oh, so is that what we're doing? Cause there's already seven appointed.
We're gonna go by an odd number.
Well, yeah, but we still don't know, uh, if P U B's, who are they gonna appoint? So we, we only have, uh, six members right now.
No, according to-
Or if they're gonna appoint.
Seven.
According to the minutes, all of done on June twenty sixth, two thousand and seven, we have, uh, Ms. Karen Ballard, Mr. Kiko Rendon, Mr. Richard Sayas, Dennis Sanchez, Mateo Salas, Abraham Galansky, and Nora Pampa.
Mm-hmm. That means that-
Seven.
Seven.
Okay, and there's nobody from P U B? There's one from P U B. So we need one more.
Ex officio. John Buzik.
Yeah. P U B already has a member on there, okay? But I have to go back to my board and see what they're gonna do. We still need one more. I believe we need one more.
So then we're gonna, Mayor, we're gonna have a-
Well, I'll move to tables.
Just answer my question, Mayor.
Okay, okay, that's why we, it's, it's fine. We can table this to the next week. I move to table this?
Okay. Figure out what's going on.
Because we don't know what P U B, okay. We have a motion to table by Mr. Atkinson, and we have a motion seconded by Mr. Garza. Uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Okay. Item number seven.
Six.
Item number six, consideration and action to appoint or reappoint two members to the Brownsville Housing Authority.
Can we, uh, put this to a public hearing, uh, city attorney?
Uh, yes, sir. I think in the past, it may have been done just by agreement, and in this case, apparently, there's some confusion over whether or not the-
Okay. Let's put it to public hearing.
We'd need to give ten days' notice of the public hearing, and then if the, if the person that's being considered, uh, objects to his removal, then there'd be, need to be a showing-
That'd be fine.
Of either, uh, inefficiency or neglect of office or, um-
Misconduct.
Misconduct. Thank you.
Okay. Do we don't need any action on this, just to, you'll just take care of it?
First need to give a ten day written notice to the member, and then, uh, for a public hearing.
That's good. Item seven?
Item seven, consideration and action to appoint one member to the Building and Standards Commission.
Good evening, Mayor, uh, Members of the City Commission. There's a correction list that is, uh, being passed on right now, and I apologize for that. Uh, first of all, the Building Standards Commission was created by ordinance, uh, number ninety dash twelve twelve, authorized by House Bill fifteen eighty seven. Uh, the committee shall consist of five regular members and two alternates. Uh, each member shall be appointed by the City Commission. The term of the office for each position on the body shall be for two-year terms. The purpose of this committee shall be to review and act upon proposed condemnations of vacant buildings in the city. The, uh, City and Building and Standard Commission meets once a month at the City Hall on second floor, uh, on the old federal courthouse at, uh, ten oh one East Elizabeth Street. And the quorum consists of four members. At this time, Commissioner Atkinson, uh, has appointed, uh, Enrique Henry Najira to serve as a regular, uh, member.
Second.
Okay. W- w- we have a motion for who?
Henry Najira.
Henry Najira?
May I ask, could you, uh, tell us a little bit about Mr. Najira?
Mr. Najira? He works, um, he has a business, he's a vice president of Texas State Bank.
No, he's former vice, he was a former.
He just became one, another one.
Oh, he did? How about that? Okay.
And he owns, uh, Southmost Cafe, um, family rooted in Brownsville, um-
He's an entrepreneur.
Yes.
Thank you. I've known Henry for a long, long time. I think he's a great guy. Just for the record, though, out here, it has, uh, Anthony Troyani used to serve there, and, uh, says appointed by Commissioner Atkinson. For the record, he was appointed by David Bencourt. Correct, uh, okay. So I'd say in essence, makes it Atkinson.
Okay, so we have a motion. Do we have a second? Okay, Leo Garza seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Uh, item eight?
Thank you.
Item eight, public hearing in action on first reading of ordinance number two thousand and seven dash ten ninety dash D, amending ordinance number two thousand and two dash ten ninety dash C for the conduct of City Commission meeting, preparation of agendas, public comments, and dealing with related matters.
Okay, um, there was an issue this morning about the seating. The presiding officer, I believe, has the, uh, authority to rearrange the seating to best conduct the meeting, and, uh, obviously was challenged by, uh, Mr. Camarillo. Uh, so fortunately, we need something like this here. I'd like for the commission to give me that authority to make the arrangements, the seating to where I can best conduct the meeting, and also, uh, limit, uh, discussions if need be, because we should be prepared when we come to the meeting. If we're gonna rehash two years, uh, of, uh, of the issue, and we should be already informed by asking a lot of questions here, I, I have to cut people off as much as I don't want to do that, but I have to, because, uh, if not, it'll drag on forever and ever. So I'd like, uh, this commission to give me that discretion to conduct the meeting as I see, as I see, uh, best fit in order to be orderly and professional and, uh, uh, in harmony, even though there may not be unity sometimes on the issues or whatever, but try to do it in the, the most harmonious way that we can, without getting into a debate as to whether I have the authority or not, whether to make the arrangements of the seating or not.
Uh, Mayor, if I may?
Yes, please do, Mr.
I guess my concern would be the limiting of questions or public comment. Obviously, we're, uh, elected by the, the citizens of Brownsville, and, and one of their, I would think that their requirements is that we ask questions and we try to find as much as we can about somebody's agenda items or, or what, what's going on. That's my concern here with the public comment. Are we gonna follow Robert's rules, or, uh, is there gonna be some sort of orderliness to this, or is it simply at your discretion?
Well, I, I, I believe I stayed very clear. At my discretion, as I see fit to conduct the meeting. Now, if we need to invoke Robert's rules or, or order later on, I will. But right now, I'm asking for-
Well, I believe that there was already, uh-
Please, Mr. Troyani, let me, let me respond.
Well, I was trying to respond.
No, let me finish responding, okay? Um, we make a commitment when we run for office and get elected to dedicate our time to, to the office we're serving. And that means, uh, uh, that requires your time to prepare for the meeting. If you come to the meeting and don't open your packet or don't study the issue, and you're going back on an issue that's been debated publicly for two years, and you're asking questions going back to issues that were discussed during the two-year period, and it's being prolonged with questions and questions and questions and questions, well, you know, I have to draw a limit as to how much questions to ask. I want you to ask questions. But if you're, if the commission's not coming in here prepared, I have an obligation to, to, to the citizens here watching this meeting here and to, to expedite it as, as smoothly as I can. So I'm asking for that discretion, uh, to be given to me as the presiding officer. If I need to rearrange the seating to best control this commission and how it conducts itself, I want that authority as the presiding officer, and also to call, uh, or limit, as I see fit, on how the meeting is going. But I will not intentionally cut you off just to cut you off. Uh, I just want to, uh, preserve and conduct the meeting in a responsible and, and harmonious way.
Mayor, may I?
You see, this is, this is, again, let, let me, let, let me start, let me start right now, but, it's fine, but waiting to be recognized, because you see, two people try to talk at the same time. Mr. Troyani, you have the floor.
Thank you. So I, I assume that we both want transparency, and I assume that we both want to have, uh, dialogue regarding issues, correct?
Go ahead and make your statement, I'm certain.
Well, I'm, I'm, just, that's simple. We both want to have transparency, and we both want to be able to ask questions, have dialogue on issues, correct?
That's correct.
Thank you.
May I have your recognition?
Okay, let, let me recognize, Mr. Sisnetos, please.
Mayor, I just wanted to make a point. I don't know how this, the changing the seating arrangements would affect handling the meeting, because, like Commissioner Troyani said, we're all, have the right to speak. We're elected by the people for the people. This chair that I sit in is not mine, and I don't believe Chair you sit in, Mayor, is yours. We're, we're given that privilege by being elected. I gave the courtesy to Commissioner Garza to sit there, because he asked, he told me he had problems, uh, viewing the board. So I told him we could sit there. I don't know how changing the seating arrangements or why we should make that an issue.
Uh, more discussion?
Mayor.
Yes.
Mayor, I, I just wanna-
The floor, uh, the chair recognizes, uh, Mr. Camarillo, please.
Thank you, Mayor. I, I just wanna, I just, I just want to be very, very clear. You alluded to some things that I don't necessarily agree with. Um, let's not make it personal, Mayor. I, I respect you. I want to see you be successful. Again, as Commissioner Sisneto said, you know, this is not our chair. Uh, we got elected, we got elected by the people. And when the people of, of this community and of our districts feel that we should no longer be there, then they'll make the choice. Um, regardless of that, I don't see how you implementing what seating, where, where should we be, makes any difference unless the commissioner couldn't hear or see. I, I will obliged by that. Uh, but I want to make sure there's something in place that tells us to do that, as opposed to, well, one day you're, you're here, one day you're not. Um, so I wanted to see, uh, where it said, you had stated that, that the Robert's rules was adopted, and it wasn't adopted. Uh, there was some language in there, so it's no way, uh, personal to you. Um, I want to make sure we conduct the business, and I don't feel just because we want to suppress somebody's comment, um, that, you know, seating arrangements should be there. Um, you know, Rosa Parks didn't move from the front of the bus to the back of the bus. I won't, I, I don't plan to move, and, uh-
Uh, Mayor, can I speak?
With that, thank you.
Okay, let him finish. Are you finished, Mr. Camarillo?
Yes, Mayor, thank you.
The chair recognizes, uh, Mr. Atkinson.
I just think this is ridiculous. I move to close public hearing.
Uh, motion to close public hearing. Can I have a second? Okay, we have a second by Mr. Garza or Mr. Longoria? Sorry. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Okay, so-
I move to approve.
Well, I guess the question is, is what are we approving?
You need to make the motion, uh, no, let the chair recognize you first. Okay, no, I recognize Mr. Charlie Atkinson first.
I move to approve public hearing action on first reading ordinance number two thousand and seven, ten ninety D.
That gives me discretion. That means I can, uh, move the public comments to the front or do whatever. I think it's, it's fit to conduct this meeting. Is that right?
That is whatever you want.
Okay, we have a motion by Mr. At, Atkinson. Can I have a second?
Second.
Have a, a second by Mr. Longoria. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Nays.
Nays.
You have three nays and, uh, four ayes.
I don't, I don't have a problem for the record, for the record.
Okay, this, this item is, uh, let, let me rec, please wait to be recognized. Let's, let's conduct this meeting professionally. I'm trying. It's not easy. I'm new here. And, you know, we'll get along through the swing of things, but please wait till you're recognized. This item was already approved. We're gonna move to the next item, okay?
I just want to state a comment for the record, Mayor.
Uh, you had your time, your period during the public hearing. Item nine, City Secretary, please.
Excuse me, were there three nays?
Yes.
Yes.
Camarillo, Troyani, and?
Mr. Sisnetos, uh, opposed it.
They move forward.
Echo that.
Item nine, City Secretary, please.
Item nine, public hearing in action on first reading of ordinance number two thirty-five dash two thousand and seven dash zero two four to rezone from general retail G to light commercial G classification, block one ninety-two of El Hardeen subdivision, located near Southmost Road and Linda Lane.
Mr. Ben Medina.
Honorable Mayor and City Commission, uh, this is our, uh, land use map, our zoning map, and, uh, here's the area that is in, uh, in the application tonight. This is Southmost Road and Linda Lane coming in here. Uh, the applicant in this case would, uh, is proposing to rezone to a fifth commercial. The Planning and Zoning Commission voted unanimously to recommend this application to you for approval.
Okay. And staff recommends approval?
As well.
This is a first reading and public hearing. Is there any opposition to this, or anybody in favor of this that wants to speak out?
So I move to close.
This is a public hearing.
Second. Second.
We have a motion to close public hearing by Commissioner, uh, Sisnetos and seconded by Mr. Camarillo. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion carries.
Motion to approve.
How can we have a, uh, uh-
Second.
Motion to approve-
Motion to approve.
By Mr. Sisnetos and seconded by my, Mr., um-
Troyani.
Troyani. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay. Item number ten?
Item number ten, public hearing in action on first reading of ordinance two thirty-five dash two thousand and seven dash zero twenty-five to rezone from dwelling Z to general retail G classification, four point five twenty-two acres out of San Pedro Grant subdivision, located near US Military Highway two eighty-one and FM seventeen thirty-two.
Honorable Mayor and City Commission, uh, this is the property shaded in red, being subdivided, uh, today. This is US two eighty-one on here and seventeen thirty-two. In our northwest land use plan, this area is, uh, considered a commercial node. Um, so the zoning here, uh, for fourth commercial will be appropriate at this time. The Plans Zoning Commission voted unanimously to approve this application to you for approval.
Okay, this is a public hearing. Uh, anybody in favor or against?
Move to close.
Okay, uh, motion, slow down, guys. Motion to, to close by Mr. Longoria and seconded by Mr. Atkinson, okay? I can't turn my head fast enough, guys, so please be patient with me. Okay, all in favor to close? Aye. All opposed? Okay, motion carries. This, uh, an action item. Can we have a motion to approve or?
So move to approve. Second.
Uh, move by Mr. Longoria and seconded by Mr. Atkinson.
Sisnetos.
I'm Sisnetos, I'm sorry. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Okay, motion carries. Item eleven?
Item eleven, public hearing in action on first reading of ordinance number two thirty-five dash two thousand and seven dash zero twenty-seven to rezone from dwelling Z to medium retail classification, five point zero acres out of block two of J C Bennett subdivision, located near FM five eleven and Ablazal Drive.
Honorable Mayor and City Commission, this is, uh, Farm to Market Road five eleven.
Mr. Medina, can you speak louder, please? Thank you.
Um, um, this is a farm to market road five eleven. This is the property shaded in red here. As you can see from our, uh, northwest land use plan, there's an overlay district and commercial zoning already in place, uh, to a third commercial. The applicant in this case just wants to make all of his property, uh, with that same zoning. This went before the Plans Zoning Commission, which, uh, was approved unanimously, um, and staff recommends also as well.
The staff recommends. This is the public hearing. Is there anybody in favor or against this? Certainly.
The, um, the shaded area, the red?
Yes.
Okay, that's the landowner's property?
That's correct.
Okay. And the blue would be the commercial that you're talking about that would, uh, border on five eleven?
That's correct, yes.
Okay. And in the back, that's, uh, my glasses aren't that good. It's a high end of the state?
Uh, of a lot of the states right here.
Of a lot of those states, okay. And that's all residential?
That's correct, yes.
Okay. What about on the other side of the, uh, the property?
Here?
Over here, yes. Is that just farmland or?
Um, it's, it's open space, uh, maybe some homes on it. Um, what, uh, what we also explained to the Plans Zoning Commission, five eleven will become like a major expressway. It'll be widened to six lanes. And in here, this corner here will completely be redone. This will, five eleven and eight oh three will be redone here. So this would be, uh, highly commercialized area. The trend right now is to, to, to proceed with more, uh, commercial uses along here as you get close to the big interchange, the big commercial note here.
Well, is the, is the proposal for the, the blue area, is that the limit of where the commercial would be, uh, as, as far as the overlay?
No, um, good point, uh, Commissioner. What we're gonna have to do, since, since five eleven will be widened, it will make sense for us, the staff and the Plans Zoning Commission, to work and expand this overlay district a little bit further to the north, uh, because, you know, the, the, the roadway will be widened. You'll have more demand from this residence here, since they're being pushed back. Uh, the, the commercial, uh, zoning that this applicant has will probably, we probably won't own that land anymore, part of it. Um, so, so it will, the, the zoning has to move up to the north, so we will do that in a city initiated, working with the Plans Zoning Commission to re, redo our plan, update our plan.
Basically, and I don't want to keep you on, uh, but basically, you're gonna extend the, the overlay district, and that area is gonna become more commercial, is what your use plan in the future is for that area?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Any more questions? Anybody in favor or against? Can, uh, you make a motion to close the public hearing, Mr. Troyani? Seconded by Mr. Camarillo, is that right?
Yes, sir.
Okay. All in favor to close the public hearing?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion carries. This is an action item. Can, uh, we have a motion either?
Motion approved.
Motion approved by Mr. Troyani, seconded by Mr. Camarillo. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Okay. Item twelve?
Item twelve, public hearing in action on first reading of ordinance number two thirty-five dash- Item twelve, public hearing in action on first reading of ordinance number two thirty-five dash two thousand and seven dash zero twenty-eight. To rezone from dwelling A to general retail classification, track one, block seventeen, out of Chicago Garden subdivision, located near Boca Chica Boulevard and Iowa Avenue.
Ben Medina.
Um, Honorable Mayor and City Commission, uh, this is, um, Boca Chica. The airport is right here. There's current zoning, uh, and this is a mobile home park. The applicant would like to expand his mobile home park to this parcel of land. The, uh, uh, the mobile home park requires a fourth commercial zoning. Uh, the plans zoning commission, uh, voted unanimously to approve this application and to recommend it for your approval.
This is a public hearing.
Move to close?
Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Longoria and seconded by Mr. Garza, is that right?
Yes, sir.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All oppose? Okay, this is an action item. Can we have a motion?
Move to approve?
Second.
By Mr. Longoria to approve and seconded by Mr. Garza. All in favor?
Sisnetos.
Sisnetos.
Oh, Mr. Sisnetos. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. All oppose? Motion carries.
Item thirteen?
No, let's go to, um-
Item thirteen, no?
Uh, no. Let's go to item seventeen. Go to item seventeen.
Item seventeen, consideration in action to adopt resolution number two thousand and seven dash zero thirty-five. Expressing official intent to reimburse the tax exempt obligation proceeds for costs associated with reconstruction, improving and equipment taxiway G and taxiway D at the city's airport.
Honorable Mayor and members of the City Commission, under item twenty-two, uh, you will be asking you to award a contract for the construction of taxiway G and D. This item that we're asking for you to, uh, adopt tonight is a reimbursement resolution. A reimbursement resolution signifies that if we start the construction, we want to have the general fund on a temporary basis lend, or lend, lend the money to the airport construction fund for the, for the beginning of the construction of these taxiways. As soon as the, uh, bonds are sold, or COs are sold, then the proceeds of this CO can reimburse the general fund for the advance, for advancing some of these funds. And this is just, uh, a normal routine that we normally do. We will discuss this further as, as, as we, as we get to the item number eighteen. We recommend that you approve the, uh, this particular, uh, resolution.
Commissioner Garza, you've been working on this. Do you have any comments to make on this?
I support it a hundred percent.
Okay. Uh, anybody has any questions?
Move to approve?
That's a motion to approve, Mr. Troyani, and seconded by who?
Me, sir.
By Mr. Garza. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. All oppose? Motion carries. Item eight.
Mayor, can we do eighteen since it, it goes up?
Yes, eighteen, I'm sorry.
Eighteen.
Okay, eighteen. Eighteen, nineteen. I'm gonna take care of eighteen, nineteen, then I'm gonna go back to fourteen, fifteen.
Okay. Item eighteen, consideration in action to approve the plan of finance regarding the issuance of approximately twelve point five million dollars in certificates of obligation for costs associated with reconstruction, reconstructing, improving and equipment taxiway G and taxiway D at the city's airport.
Honorable Mayor and members of the City Commission, this plan of finance was, uh, prepared by our financial advisor, Estrada Nojosa. In the audience, uh, I'd like to present to you Mr. Bob Estrada. He is with the, uh, firm of Estrada Nojosa. The, um, the way we are, are planning to, uh, fund this project is that we expect to get FAA grants on a three to four year period. What we're gonna do is we're going to issue the COs, let's say around twelve million dollars. We, as soon as we, uh, issue the, uh, the, uh, the COs, then we'll use this money from the construction fund to, to do the construction. Uh, Mr. Brown is already, uh, talking to the FAA and we're gonna get supposedly a, a grant this coming year, sometime in August. He's gonna make a, a, a grant, uh, application. This, uh, grant proceeds will be received by the city of Brownsville. We will, uh, deposit these grant funds into a separate reserve, like a debts service reserve account. As soon as the, uh, construction, or the bond money comes in, then we'll use the proceeds to do the construction. The, uh, the way the bonds are being sold is they're gonna be on a twenty-year amortization schedule. And the reason why we're going on a twenty-year amortization schedule is so that we can have the principal and interest at a lower amount instead of doing it a five-year. The, the bonds or the COs that will be sold will have a five-year call feature. Meaning that since we are expecting to have these grant proceeds awarded to the city of Brownsville between a three and a four year period, we'll be able to call in the CO earlier. And we are hoping to, uh, reduce or completely liquidate the entire debt within the first five years. Now, the city will not issue the COs until we, we'll get the grant award from the FAA. And that's the understanding that we're gonna do, we're gonna have. Now, Larry, you wanna?
So, subject to, uh, the grant award, okay. Speak up in the mic, please.
I'd just like to know on the action with regard to the award of the contract that occurs later on the agenda, would request the City Commission take that action subject to approval of the FAA, both in terms of the award of the contract, as well as the approval of a grant in the amount of four million four hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars for the, that we will use for the first payment associated with paying off the, the COs. The remaining two years will each occur about twelve months afterwards, and will be an amount of five million five hundred thousand dollars each that will be applied to repaying the COs for the reconstruction of taxiway G.
That's a long motion.
I move to approve, Mr. Mr. Brown's second. I'll second that.
Okay. A motion by Mr. Longoria and seconded by Mr. Troyani. Uh, you have something to say, uh?
I just wanted to say that I personally went out there with Mr. Brown and, uh, we, he showed me the, the taxiway G and D and, and they are in, in dire need of repairs. And we do need that for future, uh, endeavors and, and I, I highly recommend it.
Okay, we have a motion by Mr. Longoria and, and, uh, seconded by Mr. Troyani. All in favor?
Aye.
All oppose? Motion carries and answers. Item nineteen, please, City Secretary.
Item nineteen, consideration in action to adopt resolution number two thousand and seven dash zero thirty-six. Authorizing publication of notice of intention to issue certificates of obligation for the airport.
Honorable Mayor and members of the City, City Commission, this action is required for us to, to publish a notice that we will intend to issue certificates of obligation, and therefore we need your approval. So, move.
So, move.
Okay. Uh, motion by Mr. Longoria, seconded by Mr. Troyani. Can, uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. All oppose? Motion carries. Uh, let's go back to item fourteen.
Thirteen, Mayor.
Thirteen, I'm sorry.
Item thirteen. Item thirteen, public hearing in action on first reading of ordinance number two thirty-five dash two thousand and seven dash six oh three dash CU. Allowing a conditional use permit to sell on promise alcohol, on premise alcohol for lot one, block one of La Palacita subdivision, Tasty International Buffet, located near FM eight oh two and San Marcelo Boulevard.
Honorable Mayor and City Commission, uh, this is the, uh, a conditional use permit for the, a restaurant, uh, international, well, Tasty International Buffet to sell, um, alcohol with their meals. Plans zoning commission voted unanimously to approve this application to you.
Okay, this is a public hearing. Is there any questions? Is there any comments from the public for or against?
Move to close public hearing?
Second.
I have a motion to close by Mr. Longoria, seconded by Mr. Sisnetos. All in favor? Mr. Garza, move to approve. I don't know why it's hard to hear you a little bit. Uh, Mr. Garza, uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All oppose to close the public hearing?
Move to approve?
Second.
Motion to approve by Mr. Atkinson, seconded by Mr. Camarillo. To approve. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. All oppose? Motion carries. Item fourteen, please.
Item fourteen, consideration in action to add a three dollar fee to each customer's monthly public utilities bill to fund public safety equipment, a culture budget, and the animal shelters no kill policy.
Um, colleagues and members of the commission and, uh, the public audiences here and those who are, uh, watching us on TV. As Mayor, I have a responsibility to respond to the needs of the community. It's not easy when you're very limited by the funds that you have to work with. I inherited, uh, more need than funds that I have to deal with and I wish I had the magic wand to, 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 to address every need, but this is the beginning. I propose this because I think this is a creative way to fund, uh, some needs that are in dire, dire and desperate need of our help. I think for far too long, the, the cultural, uh, uh, needs of this community have not been met, they've been ignored. Our children are starving for this. It's part of economic development. Um, I believe that, uh, we should make it available to everybody. Uh, unfortunately, because of budget constraints that they face, it's hard to work with, with limited funds. So, I came up with a creative way that will fund the, um, the, uh, Museum of Fine Arts, the Brownsville Museum of Fine Arts, the Camille Playhouse, that, that we'll share a dollar with on a fifty-fifty basis. That's my proposal. Uh, public safety is a major concern that, that I experienced during the campaign. I personally witnessed a gentleman that had an epileptic seizure next to me at a bank, Tech State Bank on, uh, uh, Boca Chica. Uh, he fainted. I didn't know he was having an epileptic seizure. He just fainted and hit the, uh, tile floor real hard and thinking that he was having a heart attack. I rolled him over and he was bleeding profusely, and I tried to stop the bleeding and asked for nine one one, uh, to get an ambulance. Uh, unfortunately, our city could not respond. Just send the firemen. And when the firemen got there, which are very competent people, but, you know, it's scary to know that, uh, we have an emergency situation and, uh, there was no ambulance available because I asked them, I said, okay, where's the ambulance? And they told me, look, we have five full-time ambulances and one part-time ambulance. If you want me to get you an ambulance, I have to call those Fresnos for an ambulance. I don't think no citizens should be subjected to that. Had it been a heart attack instead of an epileptic seizure, the person could have very well died there. And, uh, as, as Mayor, I, I recognize the need and, and without raising taxes and trying to find ways to fund these needs, I think we can buy an ambulance every three and a half months with a dollar appropriated, uh, for public safety. And the third, but not least is the, uh, uh, the, the pet situation here in Brownsville. We passed a, um, um, uh, last resort euthanasia policy, uh, to, to try and adopt pets, find a way. It's, it's a, it's a cultural problem. It's a, a, a social problem that we have here that everywhere you go, you see pets running loose. The ordinances are not being enforced because we don't have enough co- or code enforcement officers, and also there's lack of education. We need to educate our citizens on how to be responsible, bed owners, pet owners, enforce leases, leash laws, uh, put out those, uh, puppy meals, put them out of business. The puppy meals are selling pets. Find alternative ways to, 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 to stop the killing. We kill seven thousand pets annually, historically. And I think there's better ways to do that. In order for the no kill policy to, to take effect, we need funding, uh, to deal with this. Uh, also, uh, the state has mandated, uh, the state has mandated that the citi- the city of Brownsville, in case of emergency, evacuate, uh, during a hurricane, evacuate the pet owner and the pet. And there's no funding for that. So, based on that, I feel that this is a good plan. It's not a perfect plan. And there's more needs, like I said, and I will work to address those other needs. But right now, I'm asking my commission to, to, uh, really consider this way, this heavily. Uh, I think it's, there's more pros and there are cons. It's not perfect, but I believe this, uh, this is a start. And, uh, I'd like for those who, who, who are here with the fine arts and the public safety and the BSPCA to stand up at this moment, please. Okay. Wow. I assume y'all support this. Okay.
Mayor. Mayor, may I just-
I'm just trying to address the need the best I can, and I appreciate that.
Mayor, may I?
Please. Uh, Commissioner, uh, Sisnetos, you recognize?
I think it's, it's a great idea that we do the, the public safety. I'm, I'm a respiratory licensed respiratory therapist. I've worked with people in life and death situations. I'm, I'm a pet owner. I got two dogs and I, they're part of the family. I think that, you know, the no kill policy, I'm, I'm, I'm working to try and work that with the, um, the culture budget. I believe that that's important too, 'cause that's quality of life. I just don't think that we should be adding three dollars and strapping it to the people. I think there, there's gotta be another alternative, another way, maybe to, somewhere where we can charge major industries, like the HEBs where we all shop, the Walmarts, find, find, talk to maybe our attorney, find a way to write an ordinance where we can charge them and get that funding from where we all drop our money. Not, not just adding it through our utility bill. I just don't agree with that.
It's a very, very good point, uh, if I may, uh, may I recognize you first? It's a very good point, uh, Commissioner Sisnetos. This is not, uh, a rate increase on PUB at all. This is, PUB will be used as a conduit to collect the three dollars. And this, the, the beauty about this plan is that if we implement, if this body wishes to implement, based on consensus, if we implement the three dollars, we can always rescind it if it doesn't work, okay? Uh, and if you come up with a better plan to fund it, then if it's there and, and it's, it's durable, then we can rescind it, adopt your plan. But I think we need to look for solutions, and this is a start. We can move forward. And then if you find a better solution, bring it, and we'll discuss it, and then rescind this one and adopt yours. If you notice here in this chart, I want the public to look at this chart. A year ago when we started PUB, we, we adopted, uh, an agenda to try and lower utility rates. We have lower utility rates for an average, uh, home that uses a thousand kilowatts and ten thousand, uh, of electricity, ten thousand gallons of water. In a year's time, we have dropped it twenty-five dollars a month. And if, and I'm sure everybody can attest to here that your utility bill is less than what it was a year ago, okay? So, the incentive there is, this is not a utility rate increase. If it were, I would still support it if it were for three dollars compared to twenty-five that we're saving. If you, if you're, uh, a higher consumption home, you're probably saving fifty or a hundred dollars per month. So, the incentive is there as to keep on with the plan of lowering rates. This has nothing to do with lowering rates. This has to do with using the conduit, the PUB to collect it. Unless somebody has a better conduit, uh, that doesn't charge us, that can process the money and give it to the city without, uh, making it inconvenient for anybody, uh, I, I recommend this highly. Now, Troyani, you want, let me recognize, let the Chair recognize Mr. Troyani. He wanted to say something.
Well, I have a, a concern with whether or not we can statutorily do this. If we can add a fee, a surcharge on the PUB bill, my other concern is that PUB services about forty-four thousand people, and what we're trying to do is cover the need of about a hundred and sixty to two hundred thousand people that we have actually living in the city. The other concern is that when we were campaigning before we got elected, everybody talked about keeping the PUB rate down, and this was an important, important factor. And if we're now gonna put down a three dollar charge, it might not be a big deal to me. My family supports the museum. We volunteer for the Museum of Fine Arts. You know, we have pets. We love our pets. But it's more than just about me and my family. It's about everybody that has to pay their PUB rate. And if forty-four thousand people are gonna be paying the brunt for all of our quality of life issues, that's a big concern, especially if it's not statutorily allowed. Now, the other thing that we need to look at is, now, if this is a voluntary payment on your PUB, like you do sometimes, they'll say, check off on this box if you wanna put on a three dollars, then I'm for it. But if this is something that we're gonna take out of everybody's pocket, whether or not they want it or not, after we ran for six months harping on utility rates, and the first thing we do when we get here on the second meeting is we raise your utility rate by three dollars.
It's not the rate.
It's not the rate, but it's a charge, and I don't care. If you're the person writing the check, it's a charge. It's not a big deal to me. It's not a big deal to anybody here. But if you go out and talk to our constituents, the people that we were talking to for the last six months, they're gonna look at us like, what are you doing? And that, I know that there's a lot of good people here, but that's, my first question is to Mr. Goza, can we put this three dollar charge on this bill like this as we're doing it right now?
Today's my day, I think, for the hard questions.
Get used to it.
Mr. Goza, please answer the question.
Um, sorry. Um, I think as a whole municipality, uh, we do have the authority to assess fees and charges. I also would be concerned, even though it's not a utility bill, even though it's not being included as a part of the utility bill, um, and we couldn't cut someone's lights off or take those type actions if someone didn't pay it, it would still, I assume, be subject to collection efforts and so forth. And the argument could be made that we were passing what would, what would, uh, could be considered an unauthorized tax. And, uh, if the community supported it and no one challenged us, then, then we do have the authority to implement that kind of a fee or that kind of a charge.
Well, let, let me, let me, uh, point out, Mr. Goza, as you've, uh, may know, I, I was here in nineteen ninety to ninety-three. Back then, we had a problem with street sweepers. We didn't have, we didn't have any. We didn't have none. And again, to try to meet the needs to beautify Brownsville, I introduced the area maintenance fee, which is still on there. And we bought street sweepers. So there's a precedent, okay, it was allowed. This, and as Mr. Goza read the, the, the code, okay, this is not a utility rate increase, is that right? Okay, because it's not a utility rate increase as it was back then in nineteen ninety, uh, two, ninety, when we did back then, uh, it can be taxed onto the bill. Uh, P U B is a conduit, it's not raising rates, get it very clear, it's not raising rates. This is not about the campaign issues. This is about addressing this, the needs of the arts, the needs of public safety, the needs of the problems that we are mandated by state to, to comply with in, in hurricane seasons here, and we have no funding. So based on that, it is legal, it's allowed, there's a precedent, and I don't think Mr. Goza can make a case against it, can you?
Mayor, if I may.
Uh, let, let me ask him a question. Can you?
We're always taught to be able to make a case both ways, Judge. I, I think, yes, sir, I mean, I think the argument could be made that it's an unauthorized tax. I don't know if that argument would prevail, but it would be a viable cause of action.
Well, based on that, I recommend it highly. Now, Mr. Sisneros.
Mayor, I have a question.
Let me, let me recognize Mr. Sisneros again, please.
I think the ideas are great. I think that, we just, I wish we could find another way, instead of putting on the little guy, the guy that's on a fixed income, the guy that's, the elderly, you know, um...
Do you have a, uh, alternative solution?
Well, no, but I, I'm definitely looking at it, I started studying when I got the agenda.
Would you be willing to support this? And then bring something forward that you...
Absolutely.
So you're willing to, you're willing to sup- you're willing to support this and then bring something later on to replace it?
No, I'd rather not.
Oh, wait, the chair recognizes Mr. Sisneros, okay? So you're not, you're not for it?
Right now, I'm not ready to make a decision for it.
Mr. Troyani, or no, let, let me recognize Mr. Atkinson over there, let me, he's been wanting to speak. Mr. Atkinson, okay, and then I wanna let Mr. Troyani and Mr. Camarillo.
Let me, let me just say something real quick.
That's it, okay, calm down.
It wasn't done.
The chair recognizes Mr., Mr., um...
Everybody's monopolizing this conversation, but let me, just wanna say something real quick. When, when we talked about the poor, the people on fixed income, you're on the other side of it, wanting to, to keep the impact fee low, giving it back to the developer. This is three dollars that's gonna go toward, back towards the public, the citizens of Brownsville are gonna benefit, not developers. You know what I mean?
Okay, I gotta respond to that, okay?
Wait a second, wait a second, let me finish. Chair recognizes Mr. Atkinson, okay?
All right, so, you know, I, I see you sit there and talk about the fixed income. When I talked about that in that same chair you're in right now, and you didn't care.
I did care.
And you, and you, and you kept that impact fee.
Please, 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 please be recognized.
You kept that impact fee as low as possible for whatever reason, all right?
I'll tell you right now.
And now, okay, listen to me, now we're at a point, we're still gonna lower rates. We're gonna, that's my job, is to lower the rates at P U B and hopefully get y'all's help for this next time. We're still gonna lower it, but this is an opportunity to help out some of the dying needs that we have out here. You know, the, the, the culture, the, the, the ambulances.
I'm not saying it's a bad idea.
Okay, I'm not, but what he's saying is, give it a chance, if we don't like it, we can rescind it. You know, just like when we set the impact fee at twenty-one thirty-three, and it was rescinded back to two-eighty for no such reason.
Let me send you, let me send it straight for the record.
Let, let, let Mr. Sisneros respond, real quickly.
Let me send you straight for the record, Charlie, 'cause I never once budged on the, on the impact fees. I never once said that I wasn't in favor of raising it. I said I would raise it, but I think we should do it gradually. I never said we should go to the three thousand ninety, 'cause I was concerned about the little guy.
But the issue here is not the impact fee, you're not, you're, you're, your points well noted.
About the plumbers, the electricians, the construction workers.
Your points well noted, Mr. Commissioner, okay? Now, Mr. Troyani, Troyani, Mr. Troyani, please. Please, uh, uh, hold your comments down when I call it to your attention, let others speak, please.
Mayor, I have to state it for the record, I said it straight.
I understand, I understand, okay, but you got in your turn, you got three times to where Mr. Atkinson wants. So, I mean, come on, just respect each other and proceed. Mr. Troyani, please.
Okay, you asked if there was another way to do it. And what my concern is, is just like when we had the issue with the ordinance for euthanasia, we need to make sure that we have this issue studied. And one of the things that we could do is make this a voluntary fee, where people can decide to check off on a box that I wanna pay this or not. And if they do that, then that's great. But you can't tax forty-four thousand people on, for the needs of a hundred and sixty to two hundred thousand people. And if you're gonna do that, that's wrong, and as Mr. Goza said, an argument could be made that this is an illegal tax. We're already in litigation, I don't think we need to jump into something that's gonna put us in more litigation. We don't wanna pay attorneys, I mean, I can't get paid for it, so...
I think, I think if, uh, if, if it's something improper or illegal, uh, it will be pointed out, it'll be fleshed out, and then you bring it back to us, wouldn't that be right?
Um, I would wanna err on the side of caution in terms of my own advice to the commission. I mean, I, I think that it's a thin line between, um...
There's a precedent already, Mr. Goza.
I understand, sir.
There's a precedent already, and it, and it's still on there, nobody's challenged it. And it's still on there, you're still collecting the area maintenance fee for street sweepers, which is not being spent for street sweepers. As come on proposing this time, I made the mistake the last time to where we did not, uh, uh, designate the funds specifically. This time, I'm designating the funds specifically to avoid the mistake I learned from the last time when we passed the area mains. Now, let me go to Mr. Camarillo, uh, and then, uh, Mr. Garza, please.
Mayor, it seems like, uh, both, well, it seems like you read the city manager's mind. A few months back, I met with city manager and some of our city staff, and where he discussed to me the same issue of trying to establish some sort of a fee, do it a different way for public safety vehicles and probably other, other things that are so badly needed that we can't afford through fund bounce. I, I guess you must have read, read his mind, but nonetheless, staff was already working on a plan in place. And what seems to happen, just echoing Commissioner Troyani, the, the, the document on, uh, the euthanizing of animals, this document, it's not an ordinance, it's not a resolution. A lot of questions are there with what, what exactly are we really doing? The other thing is, going back to the cultural budget, I think it would be, I think it'd be appropriate if we spent some time to sit down with individuals from each one of the entities, so we could really discuss, you know, where are we going with it? You talked about the, the Camille Playhouse. Well, what about all the other cultural, uh, activities that we have in the city? I know that we can't, we can't fund everyone, but exa- we are excluding many other organizations that could and want assistance. And so this plan, although, you know, I, and I understand where you're, where you're coming from, I think we need some time to focus on it, really think things through. This document, the other document, doesn't really allow that to happen. I wanna make sure, yeah, we do have a real good no, no-kill policy, but I wanna make sure we're talking with the people that can help us identify what that policy should be, as well as the cultural budget. I've been speaking to some of the staff from the, uh, from the museums, they stress to me, you know, that they don't, they don't wanna impose this fee on all the ratepayers. They actually, they've actually identified other cities, San Antonio and Dallas, that have actually have been extremely, extremely, uh, what do you call it, proactive in getting other monies from the states by establishing an organization. And so they're willing to go and put themselves to the test to see if they could better get other monies that other entities get in the state that we currently don't, because we don't have that organi- organization set up. I think we are missing out, we're not tapping into the talent and the knowledge of our staff. I wish we would sit down with them so that we could touch base with them and hear what they have to say, as well as the city manager and his people that have been working on this. I have nothing against these policies, I mean, these statements, I just want us to be sure, let's get it right. That's my only concern.
Charlie, where are you? Wait a second, what is it, what is it? Mr. Atkinson, uh, first of all, uh, Mr. Camarillo, I didn't read his mind, and I didn't, I didn't, I didn't have any discussions with Mr. Cabler about this. Like I said, I've done this before, I did it in ninety-one, ninety-two with the area mains fee. It was a creative way to fund the needs that the city, the committee has right now. I don't understand why, you've been here before, you never made an effort to do that.
Staff has been studying.
Now, 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 we can stand still and do nothing and be the status quo and deprive our children of cultural, deprive our public safety, uh, our, our citizens of the benefit of an ambulance. You, you can do that, it's easy to do that. I'm not for status quo, I'm moving for moving forward. Now, um, Mr. Garza, please, Commissioner Garza, please.
Ladies and gentlemen, I, uh, I think Mr. Omada has a, a, it's a real good concept, it's a great concept. I, I like the idea of funding, uh, emergency services, absolutely. I like the idea of, of, of improving the quality of life, uh, the, the Museum of Fine Art, absolutely. And, and also, uh, uh, supporting the, uh, the Dog Pound or whatever you wanna call it. I agree with all that, but I don't like the idea of asking people for money. I, you know, people are gonna see the bill, they're gonna say, "Here we go." You know, they've been promising us, you know, they're not gonna raise the rates, and I know it's not a rate increase. It's, people are not, are gonna see it as more money, more money, and I don't like that. Now, I would like to recommend that we appoint a committee of five people and, uh, have this committee research this matter. Have them get together with Pete, uh, Gonzalez, our finance director. Let's find out if there are monies in there somewhere that we can apply to especially emergency services. That should be the number one priority, okay? And I, I, I...
Pete's here right now, Pete. Say, Mr. Commissioner, okay, uh, what point will I take it, Mr. Camarillo? Mr. Atkinson, you got, and now I'm gonna open it up to the public. Mr. Atkinson, you wanna say something?
The only thing I gotta say is, we have Pete here, let's ask, we know the financial status of the city, it's not in good shape. We're gonna have to deal with the police and fire pretty soon with their negotiations and their contracts. We're going to a place, and like I told people before, I wanna raise taxes, I wanna give it back somewhere, lowering your utility rates to where you're not getting hit different ways. Um, this concept, there's a concept that goes back to the people, I mean, it's harder. Yeah, some people are gonna say, "Yeah, I'm, my bill's higher." But they should also say, "Well, you know what, now, I can go and, 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 uh, enjoy myself at some of these museums and some of these, these things that are in dire need." I mean, they're at their last limb, and we as a, as a community have to protect the arts here in Brownsville. We have to protect the, the people, the safety of their houses. You know, there's no ambulances, we have the same ambulances we had, what, ten years ago? It's not, we're not moving, you know? We'd rather give up life than, than pay an extra two dollars to have, make sure somebody's there at your doorstep within five minutes and having to wait for an ambulance for fifteen, twenty minutes? Man, I don't understand.
That's, that's, that's very serious, that we're sacrificing the ability to provide, uh, emergency care for our citizens because we're not willing to do, uh, what's here on the table that offers a solution to the problems. That is sad. But let me open it up, I, I'd like to ask Mr. Dr. Montalvo. Uh, Dr. Montalvo, I hate to put you on the spot, is, uh, but there was reference made, there's people from your organization that are against this, is this right? Okay, would you like to make a statement?
Thank you for giving me the opportunity.
Thank you for being here, Dr. Montalvo.
I've been in Brownsville almost, uh, twenty-nine years. You know, I came here, Brownsville's gone through a lot. It's, uh, you know, we had a lot of disasters, a lot of negativism back in, back in the eighties where we had so many, uh, natural disasters. Uh, we're finally getting to the point that Brownsville is looking great. You know, we're finally, finally finishing the expressways. You know, we're able, we're not complaining as much as we were complaining a few months ago with the, with the road system. I think they could've done a better job, but anyway. Uh, now we have an opportunity for our community to, uh, have something that's theirs, you know? It's, for me, for the poor person that can go and afford a beer at the end of the day and pay two dollars for a beer, they can afford three dollars a month. If you go to, I li- I live, I live in south, I live in the southwest area. I go to H E B very frequently, maybe once or twice a week. You go there at this time of the day, maybe a little earlier, everybody goes there and buys their beer. If they can afford beer, they can afford three dollars, you know, for, for the, for the betterment of our community. You know, I agree, you know, three dollars is a lot, but you can see our people, you know, they're not, they're not starving to death. You know, I have a pediatrician, you know, I've been in practice twenty-nine years, I've not seen a kid that's starving to death. There's all this, this, all this help that they have, housing, Medicaid, welfare, everything. They have, we have, what do we want? We want something for our community that looks great. We want a museum that looks fantastic, you know, I'm in the board of directors there. I cry because I feel that it's something that we need here. We have, you know, we have Little League, we have this, we have that, let's have some culture, you know? You know, I always say that, that art and the visual arts or the arts are part of our, who we are. You know, that's, makes our face, that, we are, we come to Brownsville, we have a face. You go to San Antonio, they have their arts, they have a face. They come to Brownsville, up to the last few years, we didn't really have a face, we had little things here and there. Now we have something big that we can support, our, and we, we as a public need to encourage our people from the southmost, from, from Las Prietas, from everywhere, from the port, the island, to come visit us and help us out and see what we have and we provided for, for our community. So please consider this. I don't think that three dollars a month, I mean, uh, a month, yes, which is thirty-six bucks a, a year, is a lot of money.
Okay, is there somebody from back, let, let me recognize from the back, uh, David Lopez, please. Uh, the chair will recognize you when it's appropriate, when it's appropriate, okay?
I mean, I think that, uh, the commission all knows me, and, uh, I'm with the Brownsville Firefighter Association and the Brownsville Units Coalition. I've been a firefighter since nineteen eighty-six. And I want you all to remember that the national standard for EMS is one ambulance for ten thousand in population. We're at one-fifty or sixty to close to two-hundred. We're way behind. And our firefighters are, are, we're backing up our medics as much as we can. And it is sad when I go to calls, and I used to be a certified medic, I am no longer certified, but we still work, my driver's a, a next, uh, intermediate E M T. We'll work the patient even like that, but we can't transport. And we're just, you know, got a little crying child here, a upset mom and dad. And like this gentleman said before me, Dr. Montalvo, hey, if they can afford a cell phone and they can afford all these things, I don't really know anybody that doesn't even have a cell phone these days, whether they're making twelve thousand a year or a hundred and twenty thousand a year. That, that thirty-six dollars a month's not gonna kill anybody in Brownsville, not gonna hurt them. But, you know, not having an ambulance, that could kill you, and that could hurt you. Right now, we should have at least fifteen ambulances running every day. We're at five, sometimes when we're lucky, we have six. And that's just not cutting it. We've been that way for many years. Uh, there's other things that, that we need to do and look at, but right now, the ambulance is the most important thing. Uh, our Fire Prevention Bureau's doing a great job, they're still at three inspectors, they've been there since, I, I believe, since the sixties. They have three fire inspectors for this town. When they were created, there was maybe thirty thousand people here, but that's another issue. Right now, I really need you gentlemen to consider this, that we gotta get those ambulances, we have to have them.
So you support the three-dollar fee that was proposed?
Absolutely.
Thank you, Mr. Lopez. That's from the back, let me recognize, let me recognize first somebody, oh, I'm sorry, go ahead, you had something.
Well, there's only one of those things, since I am with the Brownsville Units Coalition, our letter carriers are a little bit concerned about the stray dogs.
Okay. We can do that too. Let me recognize somebody from Brownsville S P C A. Colleagues of the commission, I gave you your, your opportunity to speak, after they speak, then I will open it up, but let them speak. Okay, you had your turn, and I'm on limit it when we open it up again, real quickly. Is anybody here from Brownsville S P C A that would like to speak? Okay, Brownsville S P C A, please.
Yeah, Goberto Barrera's been waiting there up front.
Well, I, I'm gonna, I'm gonna recognize him, but I can't recognize everybody at the same time. I'm also gonna ask for an opponent to this to speak, there's, I hea- I heard a couple of claps over there. I'm gonna give, I'm gonna give them the opportunity to speak against it, I mean, it's gonna be fair and open. Okay, uh, please state your name.
I'm the mayor, commissioners, other gentlemen and ladies, thank you for this opportunity. I think most of us will agree that our situation with animals in Brownsville is deplorable.
Can you put the mic closer to you and, and state your name, please?
As I said, our situation with animals in Brownsville is deplorable. I go to the animal shelter a lot, I see things that make me sick, I pray for the strength to go there. I see things on the street that make me sick, I hear people comment that they don't wanna locate their business in Brownsville because of the situation with animals. Um, we can do a lot better. I applaud the mayor and the city commission for voting this no-kill policy. It's tough for any community to do, but it's especially, I think, tough for Brownsville to do because we're considered a poor community. But Brownsville is a tough community that comes together when times are tough. I've seen it during hurricanes, other disasters, and I think we can do it now. I think we need to give it a chance. I know a lot of people are fighting it, and, um, some of the reasons are, um... I know some of the reasons, but I won't discuss them here. Uh, some people would like to see it fail. I would like to see us finish the clinic, we have a shell of a clinic sitting there. Catherine Stillman donated money for that, somehow the funds to finish it are not available. Maybe this money could help finish that clinic, could fund a veterinarian, and we could do some work there to save some animals. A, a spay neuter clinic. Um... It's just a sad, sad situation for animals in Brownsville. Yes, we have our pets and we love them, but what about the rest of them out there that don't have an owner, those that are abandoned? Can we step up to the plate and help those too? Or we're just gonna take care of our own? The B S P C A breaks its back all the time trying to help animals. And it's just like a drop in the bucket as to the need to help them. And it's just like a drop in the bucket as to the need to help them. We do it with our garage sales, our yard sales, our photo contests, however we can get the money. But it would be great to have some assistance from the city. Either to the, directly to the shelter or however you want to set up a spay-neuter clinic. It's greatly needed here. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Laney. Um, let me recognize Mr. Dog Alberto Barrera. And then I would like to recognize somebody that's against it, who wants to speak on, on their behalf. Okay, I'm more than happy to.
He brought a visual.
Honorable new mayor, honorable new commissioners, and the old in tenure commissioners. Where did I go wrong as a fiscal conservative to work hard for a supposedly conservative mayor? I was, I was assured that a fiscal conservative who wanted to keep utility rates down, taxes down, had won the mayorship. Now, just a week or so into the new position, our mayor, the majority mayor, wants to add three bucks to my utilities. My lord, our utility bills are already too high! A fiscal conservative, according to dictionary, is low taxes, less government, leaner budgets, less spending, efficiency at every level, reasonable needed expenditures. This was the impression I had of this sensible new city administration coming in. Where did I go wrong? I'm asking, Mr. Mayor. You're not the mayor of the poor! You're not the mayor of the rich! You are the mayor of the great majority of the middle-class, middle taxpayers! And one-on-one economics tells you the, the rich, Mr. Iturria, the Donald Trumps, the Warren Buffets. It's a small group. In the bottom, you have the, the small, poor, poor, poor. In the middle, you have the middle class. That's the working class. The rich and the famous, the Trumps, the local Warren Buffets and so forth, they have loopholes. It helps them. The poor of the poor have loopholes too! Free food stamps, Lone Star WIC, public housing, free medical care, free public funeral services. They pay no taxes and they're refunded. We, the stupid middle class, have no one to care for us, no one to look for us! Who are these? The local teachers, huh, the local counselors, the policemen, firemen, the worker who saves for mañana and do not have any pachangas? He sends his kids to college whose house taxes are raised through higher evaluations? Soon, my friends, we, the middle class, will become the pheons and the poor of tomorrow. I had to challenge the appraisal district, they went up on my evaluation. I'm not the rich to take advantage of the loopholes. I'm not that poor to ask, because I have shame, to ask for free welfare, WIC, Medicare and everything else. Why us, the overburdened taxpayers? Why us as you? Relax. Do we really need a new and bigger dog pound?
Nobody's, nobody's proposing that, Mr. Barrera.
Or do we need to repair our streets, our potholes, our alleys, our streetlights? Do we need now a new fine arts theater museum for the aesthetic viewing? Or do we need more police protection on the rapid crime rate? Do we need more taxes for more dog pound personnel? Or do we need a better drainage cleanup system to prepare for hurricanes? Gentlemen, they're all gentlemen. Settle down!
Mr. Barrera, you, you have, you have quite a bit more or are you about to finish?
Think before you taxes again. No more taxes, whether you call it a tax, a fee, arrima o repegao, it's still three bucks.
Thank you, Mr. Barrera.
Doggo.
Your point's well taken. Okay, Mrs. Bernard?
I have, I have only two bucks. The other one is missing, I don't, I can't find any.
Okay, Mr. Barrera. Thank you for coming and sharing your, your, your thoughts. Thank you. And Mrs. Bernard, do you have a question?
My question is, am I right? We will only raise one hundred and thirty-two thousand dollars if we pass this, three times four, hundred and forty-four thousand people.
It'll be three dollars a month?
It's not all just forty-four because there's people that don't pay electricity, but there's gonna be a PUB bill outside the city limit.
I would like to know what the projected income is at a year's period, because we do budgeting by a year.
It'll be, it'll be two million distributed amongst three, I mean, it's four entities.
And, and whose authority of, of the distribution? How would it-
The city manager will have that authority based on how it's approved here. How it's approved here.
Oh, we all approve it?
Well, the, we will, we will also handle the budget, but I mean, he will be in charge overseeing it, yes.
So you're, the two million will immediately help us get, uh-
Help, uh, help get ambulances, help, uh, deal with, uh, uh, state mandates that we have to comply with in case of a hurricane, evacuated pets-
And it can't be, and it can't be directed-
And the arts.
Can't be directed to any other project.
No, that's, is restricted. Does that mean you're, you're for it, Ms. Bernard, or you're against it?
Yeah, we'll do for-
Pardon me?
Six months, one year.
Okay, okay. Well, that's, that's a good point she's making, that, that, uh, maybe we could, uh, put them there for a year and then come back and look at it. Okay, I'm gonna have three comments and that's it, and they're gonna be brief, okay? Because this is dragging on too long. Go ahead, uh, please state your name, and then, it's gotta be brief, please, because we already let it go too, too long.
Robert Estes.
But I want input and I appreciate it, thank you so much.
I'm here because my mother sent me, uh-
You're an obedient son, you're an obedient son.
She's eighty ye- eighty years old and, uh, she said, "I voted for those people and now they're gonna tax me three more dollars." Uh, there is a maintenance fee tax of four fifty, and somebody's coming up with forty-five thousand. Well, I've been checking this for a long time. You can run it up to fifty thousand. Uh, if you're buying those sweepers with a four fifty, you haven't bought any, you can get those three dollars out of that maintenance and fund this project and that's it. Okay, there's another one. That's called service charges by PUB. Total amount is nearly twenty dollars just to come and check your wastewater, your electricity, and-
Are you taking into account that we're saving you twenty-five dollars a month on the average home?
It doesn't matter.
Doesn't matter?
This comes out to almost one million dollars a month, and this is not your bill. Okay? You can take one dollar from each of the three thi- things and you have the money to fund this project right away. You don't have to give anybody that new tax. My mother, I mean, she gets six hundred and twenty-three dollars, sir. I heard somebody make comments that I thought were distasteful. I just got a job and I pick up those welfare people. You should see the slum lords in which they have to live in, sir.
That's not the topic here.
And this, yes, but the thing is, they should not bring up, like you said, let's bring up the topic here. This, it's good. I support a lot of things, but the three dollars, no way. You can get it to the maintenance, which is almost, almost a hundred and fifty thousand every month. Or you can go one dollar to the waste, and that's one million dollars.
But we can't, we can't collect it to the waste because it's separate, uh, it's separate, we can't do that.
Yeah, but this is to buy supposedly the pipes. But let me check, what wastewater? Do they change the pipes every day? No, they don't, sir. You're, you're collecting one million, twelve million a year. Oh, by the way, the four dollars and fifty cents for your sweepers, it goes straight to the public funds. It's not going to the sweepers. Let's be correct about that.
And I stated that, that was my mistake, and I learned from it, to make it specific. Thank you very much. Now, uh, one more comment.
May, I think Commissioner Garcia had a, a good idea of maybe the gaming committee-
Let me finish the public comments now, open it up here.
Hold on, mayor, a lot of comments are going unsaid because you don't allow us to speak, mayor.
We, we spoke now, the chair does not recognize you.
Hold on.
The chair does not recognize you. Let them, let them finish the public comment, please. You see, you need to, please, just, let me conduct the meeting, will you? Now, please, two more and then it will be opened up like as it was before. Please go ahead, thank you.
Good afternoon, commissioners and mayor. Uh, I come before you as a substitute teacher who is currently unemployed because summer's out, and I have no problem paying the three dollar fee. I know other people don't, but most of the people that I've heard that don't wanna pay are people who can afford a four hundred dollar bill for utilities. And this is for a good cause. This is not gonna go to the pipes, this is not gonna go to somebody-
The helpers.
-that pocket, it's gonna go to a good cause and to, and that will culture the city and culture its citizens. And that's something that we need to attend to immediately. And as far as PUB goes, it would totally help the global warming issue. A lot of people, yeah, because the energy efficiency. A lot of people, you know, don't, don't turn off their, their lights at night, uh, their houses, they leave them all night. A lot of people forget about that. And I think that that'll force them to turn off appliances, to turn off the lights, that, you know, somehow, you know, people will wanna bring their own bill down and that will help that cause as well.
Thank you so much. Mrs. Miller, thank you so much. Thank you for your comments. And this will be the last one that we'll hear from, unfortunately, we are limited with time. Thank you so much. Ms. Miller?
Good evening, my name is Aargie Miller. Uh, for the record, thank you very much and, uh, thank you for your time. I'm just going to be brief. Um, I do support the three dollars, and let me tell you why I support the three dollars. I am a, a mother with kids and, uh, they do go, it's a Boy Scouts and Girl Scouts with the Camille Playhouse, and they have, uh, those, uh, what is it, campouts. Um, I do support the pets because, uh, pets are lovable and anyone that loves pets, you know, they're children from God too. And, um, the major thing and the one that I just wanna make it brief and short and the one that has the most importance is safety. I just heard someone say that, you know, we are a little bit behind, or maybe a lot behind when it comes to the ambulances and the police officers. So with that in, um, emphasizing how important is safety, that, uh, you did mention that now if hurricane season comes between June the first to November the thirtieth, and we do have hurricane season, how many people are prepared? I don't know. My, uh, gas tank is almost a little bit over half, and I strongly recommend that everybody keeps it that way. Hurricane season is gonna happen, you have to be prepared. You do have a responsibility to take the pet owner with the pet, am I correct?
That's correct, it's mandated by state.
And we, we probably don't have funds for those, so then it's still kind of the safety issue is going to happen to us and we're going to be so unprepared like the way it happened to other cities. With that in mind, uh, safety issue is there, uh, God forbid that something happens, but hurricane season is coming up and we have to be ready. Three dollars is ten cents, ten cents per day in a thirty day, in a thirty month day, am I correct? Ten cents? Let me see, so it's kinda like, you know, we put a little bit here, there, there, I'm pretty sure that, uh, ten cents, you know, it's just kinda like ten cents with that three dollars. So again, to make it brief and to the, uh, point, it is a safety issue. We need those fire trucks, we need more police officers, we need to take care of, uh, safety. So, um, Mr. Camarillo, you are my District Four representative and I strongly encourage you that you could go ahead and support my mayor, since he's my chain of command. And, uh, sir, you were in the, in the Marines, my hero. God bless you, thank you very much, and have a blessed-
Thank you, Ms. Miller.
Mayor, may I have a-
Let me recognize, very briefly, very briefly, thank you, Ms. Miller. Uh, unless you have something to say real quick, no? Okay. Uh, Mrs. Miller, she wanted to say real quick.
I just wanna add that I think nobody in this commission disagrees. I think they're good ideas, I just think we need to find an alternative way to do it.
Okay.
Now that was been brought up to the forefront, we can definitely set up a committee-
Thank you, uh-
Wait, I'm not done, ma'am. We can set up a committee to get this done and accomplished.
Thank you, thank you. Okay, uh, please, uh, okay, Mr. Camarillo?
Yeah, I, I just, you know, a quick question. And public safety is ex- extremely important. How many ambulances are we gonna buy in the first year? I wanna know-
I think we can buy-
Hold on, I'm sorry, ma'am, I'm not done yet. One, how many ambulances? And then two, how many kids with, in the low economic status will be able to go to our museums and do all the fine arts for free? I wanna know that because it's one thing to support, it's one thing to support, it's one thing-
Wait, wait.
Hold on, it's one thing-
Let's have order, please, let's, please respect each other and have order, please. You, just because the commissioner's expressing his views, asking his questions, he's entitled to just like everybody else. Unfortunately, we don't have all the time to hear everybody. I think everybody's point's well taken, uh, Commissioner Camarillo, would you, uh, you have questions, you have questions, please?
So again, and, and, and nothing to get the animals. I mean, how are many, how many animals are we going to save with the amount of money that we're gonna do in a year? Because we do need to put it into perspective. How many animals are we gonna save? How many ambulances are we gonna buy? And how many children are gonna get in for free at these venues? And, and I think that's important for us to know because-
You have, you have-
We're not gonna help police because we're gonna help EMS. So, I mean, what about PD? I mean, how are we gonna fix that? I mean, so, that's my question. I don't, I don't think we've kinda thought it all out, I think, and that's an issue.
Buck, uh, you represent police also, you represent this? Oh, no, you don't, you don't represent police. Okay, uh, uh, Commissioner, try it real quick, please. Okay, you have a motion?
I haven't spoken my piece.
You had, you had made a motion?
I haven't spoken what I need to say.
Okay, you know, go ahead, go ahead and speak, I'm, I'm, you're right now speaking. Now, let me see, I'm ask, I'm asking you to speak, finish your speaking, I recognize you to speak, okay?
Well, if you're gonna force me. I believe that we need to fund all of these things. My concern is how we do it, and if the first thing we do is turn right, turn around and put this as an addition to our PUB bill, I think it's a tax, and I'm speaking that legally. Now, if we can come up with another way to fund this, either by a voluntary statement and the lady in the back or somebody in the back has, uh, a packet of papers, I haven't seen those papers. This was put on the- Okay, I have seen the public comment form documentation.
I will let her speak, and that's the last one to speak, please, come up forward. And then that's it, okay? Please, I mean, you know, I know this is a very interesting topic and there's pros and cons, and I appreciate you coming up here, and whatever your opinion may be, we welcome it.
Gentlemen, um, mayor, first, congratulations on winning your election.
No, thank you.
Uh, many animal lover, lovers are very happy to have a strong voice, uh, in a premium seat in the city. I applaud your ideas behind your proposals. As an animal lover and dog guardian myself, I am happy to see that you have hit the ground running with the animal welfare program. However, as we see today, there are some opposition from taxpayers and apathy from people that do not see pets as anything more than beasts. I strongly believe that stray animals are not responsible for their actions. It is us, the population of Brownsville, the ones that have strayed. As thinking animals and concerned citizens, it is not enough to feel outraged by the problem and sit back across arms. Education is the key. It is our most powerful and effective weapon in controlling stray overpopulation and animal attacks. Humane organizations like the BSPCA do a noble job in placing pets in lovable homes. However, the surplus of healthy and adoptable animals, it is much larger than the number of families willing to take in an abandoned animal. Animal control is full to capacity and does not have enough funds and resources to house healthcare and ensure the adopted animals are spayed and neutered. The cycle will not stop unless we eradicate the ignorance that comes with the culture of having dogs and cats reproduced at will. Awareness, experience and humane education are the key for ending pet homelessness and euthanasia. We must stop the problem before it begins. There is no other effective solution. I would like to share some ideas on how to supplement the budget the animal control department receives. Number one, enforce and facilitate city mandated dog and cat licensing, as well as instilling spay-neuter legislation. New Hampshire state-funded spay-neuter program was launched on July first, nineteen ninety-four. This statewide program is funded by two dollar surcharge on dog licenses. Their euthanasia rate declined seventy-seven percent in eight years. Number two, regulate puppy sales through breeder permits and taxes. Three, consider using discretionary funds like the federal Community Development Block grant in animal welfare proposition. Four, by building an alliance with Texas A&amp;M Veterinary School, we could get students that need an internship to practice their skills on their animals at the shelter. By inviting students on a six to eight week rotating basis and arranging room and board with volunteer families, just like the foreign exchange students, we could have continuously staffed clinics. Spay-neuter programs have be, have proven effective and that there is a direct correlation between the number of surgeries and the shelter intake of owned and stray animals. The Laguna Madre, uh, Humane Society makes an average of fifty thousand net annually from their thrift store. There are two rooms at the shelter that can be utilized to display and sell items as well as taking in donations. The store can be staffed by volunteers and students that need to complete their community service hours. The merchandise can be donated by the public. Writing proposals and applying for public and private grants to fund programs. Maddie's Fund is a private organization that donates millions of dollars per year. The Maddie Spay-Neuter Project in Mobile, Alabama, has contributed between twenty and ninety dollars per surgery. The Maddie Spay-Neuter Project in Mobile, Alabama, has contributed between twenty and ninety dollars per surgery. And as of October two thousand and six, three thousand two hundred and five surgeries have been performed. Lobby the state legislature. New Hampshire presented the cost of savings that obtained through their program. New Hampshire has found that for every one dollar spent on their spay-neuter program, they save three dollars and fifteen cents in impoundment costs. This and many other ideas can be achieved by forming the Animal Control Task Force that will assess the needs of our community in particular. So in closing, I agree with your proposition, but we don't need another fee. We need an actual program.
Thank you. What's your name?
Anay Trangler.
Commissioner Longoria, you want to say something Spanish?
Well, that and something else.
You said that to me. I don't know.
It's the-
You wanted to say something in Spanish. You told me that.
Before I- I do, Mayor, uh, I just had, uh, City Manager Will, the distribution of these funds, if this is approved, will the distribution of these funds be audited on a quarterly basis, on a biannual basis, on an annual basis? As far as how these funds are being utilized and are guidelines going to be set for these funds and the way they're utilized?
The answer to all your questions is yes.
That's what I needed to know.
But you- you say you want to say something Spanish to the-
Give me a sec.
See. For la gente que yo represento y estén medios confundidos con este, con esta proposición, esta no es una taxa. This is not a tax. Esto es la manera en la que se puede colectar este dinero, es agregándola a P U B, porque en P U B tenemos el acceso de recibir ese dinero. No se te está agregando un impuesto al P U B. Simplemente, esa es la manera más fácil en la que podamos recibir ese dinero y ponerlo a uso. Nadie le está incrementando a nadie su vida. Esa nomas es la manera en la que vamos a recibir el dinero. Nadie te está incrementando o poniendo un impuesto en lo que es P U B. Now, you know, there have been a lot of pros and cons. Dago, you enjoy frozen taxes, my friend. You choose to leave the lifestyle that you lead and that's okay because you have that right as a Republican US citizen. And, but, there are things that need to get done in the city. We are the ones- I was placed, my friend, I wish you would not, well, you- you- you commented to going back to a committee. I am, over the last four years, I have been no stranger to committees. You're going to set a committee and I wish, uh, I didn't want to do this to you in public, but I'm going to give the public the answer that I gave you. If we set a committee, that committee is going to come back and tell you to take it to the four A and take it to the four B. That is what that committee is going to tell you. So let me save you the months of work on what that committee is going to tell you. I can tell you what that committee is going to tell you. And it's going to tell you to take it to the four A and it's going to tell you to take it to the four B. And in when doing so, let's face it, the fact of the reality is you need this money for operations and management. Out of which, my being the chair of the four B, I can tell you, we do not fund operations and management. You are in dire needs of help with operation and management to keep these facilities going. It has not been a- we cannot do it through the four A or through the four B. So the essence, you know, the- the fact of wanting to- to start a committee, you know, we're going to spend a couple of months there waiting for this committee to come back and tell us, guys, you need to go to four A, you need to go to four B. And that's going to be the issue. And it'll be a dead issue. And then we have spent months not getting anything done. My friends, you keep on referring to you placed as an office and you wanted us to make the right decisions. Ladies and gentlemen, I, like many of the people here, was placed here to make decisions. I respect the comments from committees. I respect anything that a citizen might have to add or to contribute to the decision that I make or that any one of us makes. But ladies and gentlemen, I was placed here to make a decision, whether it's right, whether it's wrong, whether it's fair, whether it's not fair. I'm here to play- I'm here to make a decision for you and what I think is best for the city. I'm not here, I am, like I told you, I will respect on anything that a committee has to say. But part of the fact, being in the seat that you're sitting, the people entrust you with a seat and they entrust you to make the right decisions for them. And ladies and gentlemen, you know, people may detract and may say what they wish, but you know what? This is not increasing your P U B bill. We are in no way trying to increase your bill. This is just a simple mechanism until where we can collect these three dollars and bring them into city coffers and start utilizing them in the next thirty days. This is not to raise your P U B bills. Please do not be misguided by people telling you that we are trying to raise your P U B rates. This is just a means of collection. This is how we collect because we don't have to pay P U B to collect this money. It's an entity that already exists and that's already they're collecting and that's simply how we collect it. That's all I'd say.
With all due respect, Commissioner, Mayor, I just think that it is a hidden tax and in Spanish, es un impuesto escondido. Yo pienso que sí.
That's fine, that's fine.
Impuesto escondido.
Uh, Mr. - Mr. - Mr. - Wait a second. Mr. Sisnados, Commissioner Sisnados, Commissioner Longoria. I think everybody has- has- has, uh, uh, stated their-
Una cosa más. Impuesto escondido o no impuesto escondido, como dijo Commissioner Atkinson. Revolviendo el impact fee a doscientos ochenta dólares, no era, no es nomas lo de impuesto, eso es invergüenzada.
Okay, let's stop, let's stop, let's stop. Look, my- my intent, okay, this is the end, the end of the comments. I make the motion, I got a motion that we ex- we- we adopt this, I propose this. I'm going to make the motion that we adopt this three dollar fee, uh, to be, uh, collected by P U B and to be distributed, one dollar for the Brownsville Fine Arts, uh, to be shared fifty-fifty with the Camille Playhouse. One dollar for public safety for specifically, uh, to start off with buying ambulances, okay? But it's for public safety equipment and the City Manager will oversee this. And one dollar for the, uh, no kill policy and, uh, uh, to adopt, uh, people, to, uh, adopt, uh, pets out and to educate the public to, uh, for medical, uh, purposes, uh, at the dog pound and, uh, to, uh, uh, enforce the- the ordinances that we have here to stop the sale of puppies in- in the flea market and stuff like that. So I make that motion based on the fact that there is need. I'm trying to address that need. And if possible, I would like this commission to- to- to give me a chance for one year, adopt it for one year. In the meantime, if somebody has a better solution, to bring it back and we can rescind this. So that's my motion. Can I have a second?
Second.
Sir, sir, you never recognized me, sir. Mr. Mayor.
By, uh, the Chair recognizes me. Atkinson, you seconded. Okay, I'll-
Wait, let it die.
No, by seconding it, so.
See, I did, I did second the motion.
Okay, what is your amendment motion?
The payment be voluntary, that anybody that wants to click off on the box, they can have it, make that payment, because I don't want it to die.
Get the mic, Commissioner.
Because it's necessary. And if it gets voted on right now, it's going to die.
Okay, well, that- that's-
Okay, I think my mic wasn't working and what I said is that I make a motion to amend it to make this payment voluntary so that it doesn't die. Because if it gets voted on right now, it's going to die.
No. Won't work. It won't work. That's right. My- my- the amendment is not accepted, uh, the amendment is not accepted. You have seconded as I proposed, Charlie Atkinson, Mr. Commissioner Atkinson?
Yes.
Or do you accept the amendment?
No, I-
Okay, you accept, okay. I just want to be, try to make sure it's clear. There's a motion, there's a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed?
Nay.
Aye.
Nay, okay. So we have, uh, two nays, uh, by Mr. Sisnados and, uh, Mr. Camarillo and then abstention by-
Abstain.
By Mr. Garza. Okay, uh-
More time.
We tried, I really tried and I'm sorry. Thank you, Yol.
Oh, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Let's go to, let's go to the next item, please.
Mayor, can we have the hands of the people that voted yes?
Okay, yes, all hands voted yes.
Yes?
Yes.
And then, uh-
That's three.
Hands of the people that voted no? And, um-
And one abstain.
Commissioner Garza's abstain.
I need more time.
So it didn't pass.
So therefore it does not pass.
Okay, um-
Come back later on.
I'm sorry, ladies and gentlemen, I did try. Let's go on to the next one. God bless you all for coming and waiting so long. Thank you. I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
Mayor, the motion to amend, was that, did that pass?
Pardon me?
That was voted down. Motion to amend was voted down.
There was a motion and a second, but there was no vote on it.
There was no vote.
There was no vote on it. I just first and second.
No, it was seconded. There was no vote on it?
There was no vote on it. No, no, there was- there was a motion, but it never- it never got a second. And, Mr. - Mr.-
No, that's incorrect, Mayor.
But Mr. Sisnados is saying that he seconded it.
It was never, I- I didn't hear you second it and we went- we went back to, uh, Mr. Camarillo, I mean, Mr. Atkinson.
Did you recognize Estela?
Is it, is it recognized as a second?
Any confusion?
I heard Mr. At- I mean, Mr. Troyani motion to amend the- the, uh, first motion was a second by Commissioner Sisnados.
Thank you.
Uh, there was no call for a vote. We have to yays or nays on this.
So then let's call it for a vote.
Let's vote on it.
I di- I didn't hear, I didn't hear the, uh, the motion, okay. So let's call for a vote, uh, on the amendment then. All in favor based on the amendment?
Aye.
Nay.
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 You don't want to volunteer.
There's three nays, okay?
Abstain.
Okay, and you got one abstention.
You don't want the payment even voluntary.
City Secretary, you got it. This discussion is done. City Secretary, you got the vote recorded properly? Okay. Now, would you make a motion?
Hold on, I'd like to make a motion to charge two dollars. I know, it's a three, it doesn't matter. I'll make the motion, charge two dollars, distribute it evenly amongst the three entities and, uh, look at it in six months, see where we're at. And if- and if it doesn't, if it doesn't create the things we want to create, we send it after a year.
Okay. Do I have a motion? Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, Mr. Longoria, seconded it. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed?
Nay.
Nay. Mr. Camarillo?
Nay by Mr. Garza?
Abstain.
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 And Mr. Troyani? Mr. Troyani, how's your vote? Nay. Mr. Garza?
I abstain.
Huh?
It's three.
Mr. Garza, what is your vote?
I abstain.
It's three, three two.
So it passes.
It passes.
It passes. Because it's three yays and- and there's one abstention?
No.
There's three no's and-
Two- two abstentions right here. You abstain, you abstain.
Exactly. But I thought last time we did that, that didn't mean anything.
But there's three yays.
But according to what we did earlier-
Oh.
It doesn't-
You have to have a super- you have to have a-
This one doesn't require a super majority, does it?
It does not. It passed. You got two dollars. It passed. It passed. It passed. Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Jim, is that, is that correct, Jim?
Mr. - I was asked earlier this evening if, uh, it required a majority of the entire governing body.
Majority of the governing body.
Uh, I gave the opinion from the cuff that it did not, um, in which case we would need to go. I, in the meantime, while I'm sitting here, I looked at Robert's Rules of Order and it indicates that it only requires a vo- a vote, um-
Majority vote.
A majority of the votes cast.
Yeah.
In which case I would have given Commissioner Troyano the incorrect answer when I was asked previously.
So Mr. Espadason, the guy, based on what Robert's Rules, uh-
Okay, right now, let's get back to this one right here. This is, this is separate. You deal with that. This passed.
It's the same answer, Mayor. According to Robert's Rule of Order, it would be a majority of the votes cast.
Yes.
In which case it would be a two dollar fee.
Okay, thank you very much. Thank you. Okay, let's go to the next item, please. City Secretary, let's go to the next item.
Item fifteen, consideration in action authorizing the creation of an ordinance to set forth application guidelines and procedures for appointments to city boards and committees.
Okay, what- what this is, is that we have a lot of boards that we need to fill. We have a lot of, um, appointments that need to be done.
Right, you're right.
Uh, we're no longer a small town. We are almost two hundred thousand people. We need to make sure that we have qualified people. The city charter requires that people who serve on these boards can't have tax liens or- or criminal history. Uh, I pulled a application off of the, uh, Governor Rick Perry's, uh, website. And it also would tell us if people that were appointed to certain boards had, uh, dealings with the city, if they had a monetary interest in that. I think that, you know, we all ran under the, uh, the premise that we want transparency in government. Well, one of the big things that government does is it- it sets committees, like Mr. Garza had talked about earlier, that vote on things. We need to know if the people that are on these committees have interest, if these people have their own agendas. And we also need to make sure that we're complying with our own rules regarding, um, liens, whether people are paying their taxes, whether these are the appropriate appointments. I would recommend that we have a application process. Anytime that you, uh, apply for a job, anytime you apply to serve on a board of some sort, there's generally an application process. I think this would bring transparency to our government and I think it would go a long way in setting up standards. And I- I think that it would, uh, move us forward. And so my proposal is that we have an application for any board, committee, uh, any city board or committee members.
Okay, uh, any discussion?
Mayor, I've got a comment.
I agree.
Okay, let me Chair recognize, uh, Mr. Longoria.
If I'm appointing somebody to a committee and that's my right as a governing member, that's an appointment. I'm appointing somebody. I'm not asking for qualifications. I know that that person will be qualified. Therefore, I'm exercising my right as a city leader to appoint that person and it is my right as a sitting city commen- uh, city commission member. Now, you know, if I'm going to appoint someone to a board, I have that right. If I have a second and I have a majority vote to appoint that person, respect it. If you don't have the votes to get somebody onto a committee, don't bring me an application to try to get your person on there through an application process. That's just the way the card folds.
Well, may I respond?
Sure.
Wait, let's Chair recognize you first. Let me- let me recognize Mr. Atkinson. Let me recognize Mr. Atkinson.
I'd like to add that too because this is political right now. Why? Because when I first got elected, I went to, uh, Commissioner Arroyo. I went even went to Commissioner Camarillo and asked him, look, why aren't we following the process? Why can't we do this? The same things they're asking for right now, but I- they closed the door on me. They say, hey, look, if you don't have, uh, uh, the votes, you don't get it. And this is the way it's been for thirty, forty, fifty, sixty years. So I didn't complain and I didn't make it public. I could have done what they're doing right now. I didn't do it. I ate it because I didn't, I didn't feel, I was part of that little, um, forum that they had. So I had to just shut up and eat it. And what I'm saying is, it's just, just a way, it's a political way of saying, look, we want transpar- it's not transparency. Because they could have had transparency when I brought this up a year ago. And they didn't want transparency. They wanted me just to be quiet and accept their, whatever they- they had going. So all I'm saying is leave it the way it is, the way it's been for the last hundred years and that's it.
Okay, Mr. Garza, the Chair recognized Mr. Garza.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. Um, I- I agree a hundred percent with, uh, Commissioner Atkinson and Commissioner Longoria. I don't think we should make any changes at this time. It's been like this for years and years. I, as a city commissioner, I have an obligation and responsibility to the citizens of Brownsville. And when I recommend someone, I have already made sure that person is clean, has no baggage, uh, nothing in the closet. So, uh, I therefore, uh-
And you are a private investigator, aren't you?
I am.
Okay, uh, Mr. Camarillo, you had something to say?
Yeah, Commissioner Atkinson, I- I wish you wouldn't put words in my mouth because I don't think I told you, take it as it is and, or eat it. I don't ever remember I said those words, but what do you call it? I, you know, you know, Commissioner Longoria last week's pointed out, we've never done it before. Why are we doing it now? You know, I don't understand. I mean, it's not, I'm not here to be political, but if there's some documentation on a candidate-
Mr. Camarillo, first of all, look, there's a, Mr. - Mr. Camarillo.
The Commissioner has the floor.
Excuse me, excuse me, please, please. Let me interject, please. There's a survey there that says that we're not going to work together, okay? The Brownsville Herald publicized that. We have to work together. This is our community. So this, going back and forth and- and you said this, I said that, that's children's stuff. Let's move on, you know? Uh, we got to work together. Let's work together, you know? Let's not take it personal. Please try to keep your personal comments. Uh, it's unfortunate that this is happening because we represent the community and they expect more of us. So please, let's keep it not personal, okay?
And I understand exactly what you're saying. I'm just asking, I wish, I wish I wouldn't be interrupted. I- I respect you and I wish you'd give me the same respect, the same respect. But what would be so wrong with having an application? An application doesn't mean you're going to get it or not. What would be, what would be the problem?
Let me recognize the Speaker. Wait a second. Let me- let me respond to that. There's nothing wrong with what you're asking, but you just don't have the votes to pass it, I think. But let's cast a vote and find out.
Well, hold on, I get a comment.
Cast a vote and find out. I don't know.
I have to know, Mayor.
I'll recognize you.
When people do business with the city and they're placed on boards, that's a conflict of interest. We have a responsibility to avoid an appearance of impropriety. There have been some things that have hit the paper recently about our board appointees and our city management. And these are things that I thought that we were running for when we ran for this office in order to address and to- And these are things that I thought that we were running for when we ran for this office in order to address and, uh, and to change. I don't care if it's been, hasn't been done in seventy-five years. I wanna make sure that the people that I'm appointing to a board don't owe taxes, because how does the city make money? By taxes. I wanna make sure that the people that I'm appointing to boards, and if all we're gonna do is get the names of the people on the day of the meeting, nobody provides a list of the people that are appointees to these boards. It's, we're all sitting here and this is him. Well, I didn't go to grade school with everyone that they're talking about. I don't think now that we're almost two hundred thousand people, that anybody can say that they went to grade school or high school with everybody that's a board appointee. It makes sense. If you're, we're no longer a little town. This is like saying, well, I ran a mom and pop hamburger stand and now I'm McDonald's. Well, now we're getting to be McDonald's. And we need to have an application process so that we know who's in charge of making decisions about our money and about our rules and about our planning and our zoning and all of those things that affect us because it affects every person here. And maybe I don't have the votes for it, but it's a good idea. And it's a good idea because if you've got a business interest in the city and you're on a board, that may affect your decision-making process. And what we would all like to avoid is the appearance of impropriety. I think that was something that Mr. Amal- Amada ran on when he became mayor, is transparency. Well, this is transparency at its most basic form. And I move now that we vote on whether or not we'll have applications for board members and committee members at the city.
I'll second that, Mayor.
I am, I am, uh, for transparency. Um, good ideas are, are welcome. Uh, my good idea of three dollars was, didn't go through and I have to accept that, you know? I have to accept less. Those are good ideas. Just because we don't get the votes the way we want them.
Mayor, he motioned.
Doesn't, doesn't mean, you know? But anyway.
He motioned and seconded.
Let me call for a motion. You got a motion?
I seconded, Mayor.
You have a motion and a second. A motion by Mr. Troyani and motion by Mr. Camarillo second. Uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Nay.
Nay?
Nay.
Nay.
Okay. Now, do we have another motion or?
Oh, with the nays are.
Okay. Is that it? Okay. Let's move on to the next one then.
I believe that would then.
Okay. Let's move on to the next one. City Secretary, please. Okay. Please, uh, withhold your comments. Come on. Let's go to the next one.
Item number sixteen, consideration in action regarding a moratorium on animal euthanasia approved on June twenty-sixth, two thousand and seven. The effects are same on public health and to amend the moratorium as approved on June twenty-sixth nineteen, two thousand and seven.
Okay, um, this was already discussed and approved and you're bringing it back, uh, very briefly. What is it that you want?
I basically want to amend the document that was voted on last week. I want to include the material that was provided by Dr. Robinson. And I also wanna be real specific on what we are saying in the document. It's not an ordinance, nor is it a resolution, nor was there any guidelines or policy. There was no backup information included. I wanna make sure we are very clear on the fact that it's, we are, we're going to halt the, the, uh, euthanasia of cats and dogs as you've worked with staff. I just wanna make sure that's in here because you just can't go and change policy after it's already been voted on. I just wanna make sure that we address that and we do abide by state law and it's in the, it's in the document.
Uh, Commissioner, we are abiding by policy and we're abiding by what I said, that euthanasia should be the last resort. When we talked about it last time, that's the way it was approved and that's the way it was understood and it was clarified and it's, we're com- com- complying with state law. So I don't see no need for us to go and amend anything. And you're the only one that has that. Now, even, uh, the, the lady that was here, the Dr. Robinson was her name?
Correct.
Said that we're, we were in compliance with state law. So there's, there's no point in this. Uh, you wanna make a motion?
I wanna make a motion. I wanna include the information that was given to everybody as part of the record.
Uh, he has made a motion. Do you, do you have a second?
Mayor, can I ask a question? Uh, the information that was included by Dr. Robinson, what is it that's different, Commissioner?
I, I don't, I don't understand. So, I don't understa- I haven't seen it. So I don't think it's appropriate to even entertain it right now since we haven't even seen it.
Well, Mayor, then if you, you wanna go ahead and take the vote then, so you can deny it.
You got a, you got a motion? Do I have a, do you have a second?
Yeah, second.
Okay. Mr. Mr.
I think Troyani had seconded it.
I had.
Okay. Mr. Troyani seconded it. Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.
Nay.
Nay.
Okay. Motion doesn't pass. Okay. Uh, the, the next one, please.
Item seventeen, item, uh, twenty.
No, that was done.
Yes, item twenty.
Okay.
Consideration in action to approve an interlocal cooperation agreement between the city of Brownsville and the county of Cameron, Texas for drainage easements for the FM five eleven expansion project by the Texas Department of Transportation.
Mayor, members of the commission, this, this item is, is, uh, an issue of acquiring drainage, uh, easements for the five eleven, uh, expansion project. Um, as, uh, this meeting was being held, uh, the county commissioners were also voting on this and, and basically it's an interlocal agreement for their support in assisting us with the purchase of approximately ninety acres, ninety acres or thirty-one, uh, parcels of property for this, uh, uh, project. Uh, and I would like, uh, Pete Sepulveda, who's, uh, works for the county and RMA, who's been assisting us in, in, uh, in, in funding this, uh, this venture with us. And, uh, we appreciate their help and, uh, I'd like him to, to expand on this, uh, project.
Welcome, Pete, to our city commission meeting.
Thank you, Mayor. Good to be here.
Sorry for making you wait so long.
Mayor and commissioners, um, my name is Pete Sepulveda. I'm the county administrator for Cameron County. About a month ago, I got a visit from the, uh, Texas Department of, uh, Transportation personnel. Um, wanted to advise the county, um, that there were thirty-one parcels that needed to be acquired for drainage easements, uh, for the FM five eleven project. Uh, TechDOT is working on expanding FM five eleven between Highway forty-eight and, um, the expressway. It's a forty-six million dollar project that they're working on. Um, they, their timeframe is they plan on letting the project in September and being under construction in November. Um, after TechDOT staff left my office, I looked at the strip map that they had left behind. And I noticed that thirty of the thirty-one parcels were inside the city limits of Brownsville and, and only one was in the county, uh, jurisdiction. So I called, um, Mr. Kabler and, and, and I advised him. Um, I went back and I did a, a, a simple evaluation of the thirty-one parcels. Um, and I think that estimated value is about six hundred thousand dollars. Then looked at, um, about a third of those parcels or a third of the acreage, um, belonged to the Brownsville Navigation District. So, um, Mr. Kabler and I have met with the, um, Port of Brownsville officials a couple of times and trying to see if the port is interested in donating, um, those, those parcels or those drainage easements. Um, when I called Charlie and I told him that it was about six hundred thousand dollars, uh, and I told him that this would not be a non-system project with TechDOT, meaning that, um, neither the city nor the county would be reimbursed by TechDOT. And he said it was too big of a project, uh, for the city. So I agreed to work with him. And since the Port of Brownsville, um, owned some of those parcels, I thought it'd be the perfect project that all three entities could work together on. Um, what you have in the, in the interlocal agreement, and as a matter of fact, the commissioners' court unanimously approved the agreement, uh, a few minutes ago, uh, the city's responsibility would be, um, to provide the hundred thousand dollars upfront that would be used for, um, preparing the appraisals, the review appraisals and title commitments. Now, if the Port of Brownsville donates, uh, those drainage easements, then this number will, will probably be closer to about sixty, seventy thousand dollars. Uh, so it would be a savings if, if, if they do donate that property. The county, in addition to, um, in addition to being, uh, responsible for two hundred thousand dollars, uh, we would provide the in-kind contribution, uh, I would probably assign four or five different staff members to start working on the drain, on the acquisition of the drainage easements. Um, I mentioned earlier, TechDOT wants to start construction in November. We really do not have a lot of time. Even that timeframe that we have is, is extremely limited. We're gonna have to get creative with TechDOT and find a way to, uh, to try and get right of entries, uh, for those parcels so that the construction can begin. Um, so this is what we're proposing, a partnership, you know, between the city and the county. Um, and hopefully we can, uh, get the Port of Brownsville to donate those parcels, uh, and move forward with the project.
Any questions, Mr. Sepulveda?
Mayor, I'd move to approve this motion.
Second.
You support it, Seth? The city major?
Yes, sir. And again, we, we need to, uh, thank the county and, and hopefully the port for their assistance on this. And it would require a budget amendment, which we'll present at the next meeting.
Okay. We have a motion by Mr. Longoria. Do I have a second?
I did.
Mr. Garza. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Sepulveda. Next item, please.
Item twenty-one, consideration in action to authorize the execution of a lease agreement for airport property.
Mr. Larry Brown.
Mayor, uh, members of the city commission, uh, the city commission is asked to consider and act on a right of first refusal with lease terms attached with the firm of Brownsville International Air Cargo Company for the operation of a dual customs international air cargo business. Uh, two representatives of this company, both Mr. Flores and Mr. Donatia are here to represent Mr. Ferias, who is the developer of the business. The right of first refusal is for an initial monthly period of three months with options for additional three more. As the cargo operation ramps up, a lease would be executed for five years at fair market value. The airport advisory board has reviewed this matter and recommends approval. The board is represented here in the audience this evening. Be more than happy to address any questions that you might have.
I think you addressed them in the, before, so.
Can I approve?
Can I have a motion?
I, I saw move.
A motion by Mr. Um, Garza and seconded by Mr. Camarillo. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion carries. Next item, please, Ms.
Item twenty-two, consideration in action to award a contract for taxiway G reconstruction and taxiway D lighting rehabilitation at Brownsville South Powder Island International Airport.
Mayor, commissioners, at the request of our aviation director, Larry Brown, the purchasing department solicited formal sealed bids for this project. It's the intent of the city of Brownsville to contract with a general contractor for the purpose of performing reconstruction of taxiway G and taxiway D lighting rehabilitation at the Brownsville South Powder Island International Airport. Total of fourteen general contractors requested and received bid packages. Four acknowledgements were subsequently received confirming bid participation. Seal formal bids were open for this project on June thirteenth. A total of two bids were received and were submitted to the aviation department and the project consultant for review. On June eighteenth, the project consultant submitted a letter to the aviation department to recommend the award of a contract to the low responsive bidder. Uh, our recommendation to you this evening then is consideration in action to award a contract for taxiway G reconstruction, taxiway D lighting rehabilitation at Brownsville South Powder Island International Airport to Zachary Construction Corporation out of San Antonio. They were the low responsive bidder for a base bid and additive bid number one, additive bid number three in the amount of nine million, eight hundred eighty thousand, four hundred seventy dollars. Uh, this is subject to FAA approval. And then the funding sources have been discussed in previous items this evening.
How soon can they start?
As soon as FAA does the approval and the funding is in place, uh, and the bonds are secured, notice to proceed will be issued, Commissioner. The project has a timeline of one hundred seventy days.
Will you approve?
Second.
Second.
A motion seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Okay. The motion carries. Next item, please.
Item twenty-three, consideration in action to award purchase of three thirty-five foot low floor transit buses to the Gilligan Corporation of Hayward, California.
Honorable Mayor, our fleet administrator, Ivan Walker, will present this item. Honorable Mayor, members of the city commission, at the request of bus director, Norma Zamora, this office has been in contact with the Gilligan Corporation of Hayward, California and the Nashville Metropolitan MTA, a governmental entity comprised of the metropolitan governments of Nashville, Tennessee and Davidson County, Tennessee, in an effort to acquire three new thirty-five foot transit buses. The usual acquisition process requires approximately a year's lead time due to the bidding processes involved and manufacturing requirements. Attempting to save several months and perhaps a little funding, the city has researched an avenue of bus acquisition referred to as piggyback purchasing from the Gilligan Corporation via an existing sales contract with another Nashville MTA transit authority whose original request for proposal and subsequent sales contract contains specific language permitting optional purchase assignments by other cities, i.e. the city of Brownsville. In two thousand and two, Nashville MTA developed an RFP package for transit bus acquisition with a subsequent five-year sales contract in oh-three, allowing Nashville MTA to acquire a minimum of a hundred and twenty to two hundred transit buses of differing sizes and configurations. It is within this RFP and subsequent contract where Nashville MTA retains the option of assigning purchases to other cities. This city has requested and obtained a current price quote on the type of transit bus that best meets the city's needs, which is a Gilligan low floor thirty-five foot transit bus at a price quote of three hundred and twenty-five thousand, one fifty-eight each. Bus is requesting three of these buses for a total of nine hundred and seventy-five thousand, four hundred and seventy-four dollars. As per the director of bus, available funding is comprised of several funding cycles and totals nine hundred and eighty-nine thousand, seven hundred and forty-one dollars. Specifications for the type of transit bus the city requires have been established and quoted upon by the Gilligan Corporation. Historically speaking, the existing fleet of twenty-four route buses today is comprised of ten ninety-one models, ten oh-one models and four oh-four models. Based upon the age and mileage of forty-two percent of the operational fleet, the city should commence replacement acquisitions to forestall increasing levels of, of mechanical downtime which impacts ridership. Enclosed for your review in your packet are copies of the executed letter of intent between Nashville MTA and the city of Brownsville, a nine binding letter of intent to Gilligan Corporation, and copies of support information extracted from the original RFP advertised by Nashville MTA, which speaks to the assignment of purchase options and a needs assessment by the city's contract fleet administrator. The, the recommendation by staff is the following. One, consideration in action to approve and award a purchase for three thirty-five foot low floor transit buses to the Gilligan Corporation of Hayward, California in the amount of three hundred and twenty-five thousand, one fifty-eight each for a total of nine seventy-five, four seventy-four. Funding for this future procurement will be derived from federal grant formula funds for fiscal years two thousand and six, two thousand and seven, oh eight totaling nine hundred and eighty-nine thousand, seven forty-one. Bus administration concurs with this recommendation.
Any questions, Mr. Walker?
I moved.
Okay. Wait a second. Who makes the motion? Commissioner Sisnetos make the motion? Who seconded it?
I did.
Mr. Garza. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Okay. Motion carries.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you, Mr. Walker. Uh, next item, please.
Item twenty-four, consideration in action to award a contract for the two thousand and four CIP project contract number three for street paving and drainage improvements for southeast quadrant.
Honorable Mayor, commissioners, at the request of our engineering director, Mr. Carlos Lasta, the purchasing department solicited formal sealed bids for this project. It is the intent of the city of Brownsville to contract with a general contractor for the purpose of performing street paving and drainage improvements for the following list of streets under contract number three for capital improvement plan from CIP two thousand and four. The street listing is East, East Jackson Street, East Harding Street, East Grant Street, Arthur Street, Ramada Street, Dukey Street and Yama Street.
Where's Dukey and Lama?
La Posada one.
There's times where we have a map that indicates them. I don't know if we have a map prepared.
But that's fine. That's fine. Yeah, sure. I already know where La Posada one is.
Seal formal bids were open for this project on June fifth. Total of three bids were received and tabulated by the project's consulting engineer, Mr. Edmundo Gonzalez, Jr., P.E. from Gonzalez Engineering and Surveying. Our recommendation to you this evening is consideration in action to award a contract for the two thousand and four CIP project contract number three for street paving and, paving and drainage improvements for East Jackson Street, East Harding Street, Arthur Street, East Grant Street, Ramada, Dukey and Lama Streets to Cubco Construction of Brownsville, who was a low responsive bidder. And the bid amount is one million, nine hundred eighty thousand, one hundred fourteen dollars and eighty-five cents. Uh, this is actually under the engineer's estimate of two point one million dollars.
Okay. Mr. Carapa, I was noticing here in compared with the, the second, uh, lowest bid, uh, G and T paving, there's a difference of, um, a hundred and twenty-three thousand. Uh, because I think, uh, Cubco bid one million, nine hundred eighty, a hundred fourteen thousand, uh, one hundred, one million, nine hundred eighty thousand, one hundred fourteen dollars and eighty-five cents. And G and T paving, uh, bid at two million, eighteen, uh, thousand, two hundred and six and eighty-nine cents. Uh, there's a difference of thirty-eight thousand, I believe, there. Okay? That falls in within five percent rule, I think. Now, let me ask you, is, uh, Cubco, uh, as experienced as G and T in the paving?
Cubco has worked for the city in pa- in the past. Uh, the engineering department could answer any particular questions as to any issues. We have no known issues working with Cubco and they have.
The question is, do they have experience in paving? I know they do, I know they do underground because PUB, um, on the PUB board, utility stuff like that. But do they have experience in paving?
The, uh, I'll answer that question this way, Mr. Mayor. The plans and the specifications have been prepared by a certified engineer. The bids that were received have also been reviewed.
The bids that were received have also been reviewed by a certified engineer. We have a certified engineer's recommendation. Part of his responsibility is to make sure that the bidders are qualified to do the work.
Okay. Let me, let me, let me then look at this here. If Cubco were to do the utilities, the underground, it would be six hundred and seventy-eight thousand, forty-seven dollars and thirty-five cents, and if G and T, who is, I think, more experienced, would, would charge, bid it out, one million, one hundred seventy-eight thousand, eight hundred forty-two point eighty, that would be a savings to the city of a hundred and twenty-three thousand, two hundred and twenty-four seventy. Couldn't we split these out to where Cubco could do the underground and G and T paving do the paving?
Mayor, my response to that would be that this bid was led as a lump-sum bid.
Lump-sum bid.
The bidders that responded, responded in a like fashion. The City of Brownsville, the Purchasing Department, as a matter of course, in all of our bids include pre-bid meetings. We include notices to the bidders to attend these meetings. If they have any issues to raise, that is the time to raise those issues. Those issues are then distributed to the departments, the engineers involved, and we, we study them, and we issue addenda to the bid package if required. During our pre-bid period for this bid, there were no issues of that, of what you're applying in, or, excuse me, of what you're stating in this, as to split the bid into separate components.
I just got here, that's coming, you know, I'm sorry. And I also understand the five percent rule, that it was, and, you know, the experience, I believe G and T's more experienced.
They're outside of Brownsville, Mayor. If I think, if I'm not mistaken, the five percent rule was.
I understand that. I'm just asking the question, because this is.
Local preference doesn't apply in this particular instance, but it will in others in the future, sir.
Okay. It will in others in the future, okay.
Yes, it will.
Okay. Anybody else have any questions?
Motion to move to approve.
Second.
You got a motion to approve and second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All against? Nay. Okay, next item, please.
Item twenty-five, consideration and action to award a contract for library cataloging records for the Brownsville Public Library System.
Honorable Mayor, Commissioners, at the request of our Public Information Services Department Director, Mr. Jerry Hedgecock, the Purchasing Contracting Department has reviewed proposals solicited by the Brownsville Public Library from Amigos Library Services, a library consortium nonprofit organization, for membership fees and subscription fees for cataloging record access from WorldCat database by Online Computer Library Center. To give you a little information, Amigos is a library consortium of public, private, and academic libraries. Amigos began nineteen seventy-four in Dallas as Amigos Bibliographic Council when twenty-two libraries united to bring OCLC access to the southwestern United States. A not-for-profit organization, Amigos is today one of the nation's largest library resource-sharing networks and a leader in providing information technology to libraries. Our Brownsville Public Library System uses Amigos services for cataloging records for all of the books, DVDs, and other materials that are provided for their patrons. There are individual cataloging records for each item that the Brownsville Public Library has in their collection. These records are loaded onto the online catalogs so that patrons can search for books and other items. The library system also utilizes training, consulting, material preservation, and other resource-sharing services provided by the Amigos Library Services. This service is necessary for the Brownsville Public Library System to catalog and provide new items available to the public. Without this service, the Brownsville Public Library System would not be able to process the thousands of items that are added on a yearly basis. Now, under the general provisions of the Texas Local Government Code, under section two fifty-two, point oh twenty-two specifically, the determination has been made that this procurement is exempt from the competitive bidding statute. Therefore, our recommendation to you this evening is consideration and action award of a contract for library cataloging record services for the Brownsville Public Library System to Amigos Library Services of Dallas, Texas. The amount is twenty-six thousand, three hundred thirty-one dollars, eighty-five cents per year. This contract is set to commence immediately and will end on June thirtieth of two thousand and eight.
Move to approve. Questions? We have a motion?
Okay. Jerry, you guys are always making trouble there.
Who made the motion? Commissioner Snell's? Okay, Commissioner Snell's. Who seconded it?
Okay.
Commissioner Aggison seconded it. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion carries. Next item, please.
Item twenty-six, consideration and action to award a contract for the thirty-second year Community Development Block Grant Streets and Stormwater Drainage for Ascenda Garden subdivision project.
Honorable Mayor and Commissioners, again, at the request of our Planning and Community Development Director Ben Medina and our Engineering Director Carlos Lastre, the Purchasing Department solicited formal sealed bids for this project. It is the intent of the City of Brownsville to contract with a general contractor for the purpose of performing streets and stormwater drainage improvements at Ascenda Garden subdivision for the following list of streets under contract number four for capital improvement plan CIP two thousand and six and the thirty-second year CDBG. And these would be Duncan Road, Duval Street, Kleberg Avenue, Willacy Avenue, Neusis Avenue, Grace Avenue, Cameron Avenue, Access Road. Seal formal bids were open for this project on June sixth. A total of two bids were received and tabulated by the project's consulting engineer, Flacio Garcia of Plagar Engineering. Our, our recommendation to you this evening is consideration and action to award a contract for the thirty-second year CDBG Streets Stormwater Drainage Improvements for Ascenda Garden subdivision project to G and T Paving of Brownsville, Texas, the low-responsive bidder, and the total amount of their bid was nine hundred forty-two thousand, four hundred eleven dollars, eighty-six cents. This includes the additive alternate for water and sewer utility improvements. The engineer's estimate was at one point one million, so this has come in under by a hundred and fifty-eight thousand. This has been the trend on the last.
Move to approve?
Okay.
Okay, let me ask you this. Was this taken before the CDBG Board?
I will defer that question to Ben Medina.
Ben, was this taken before the CDBG Board? Okay. Okay, we have a motion by Mr. Aggison.
One quick question. Was the five percent rule in place here, Mr. Kalapa?
There was no application for the five percent local preference rule. There was no request by any of the bidders to do so.
Okay. Thank you.
We have a motion by Mr. Aggison. Who seconded it?
I'll second.
Longoria? Okay, Mr. Longoria seconded it. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed?
Abstain.
You abstain. We abstain. Mr. Snell's abstains. Everybody votes for it. Okay. Thank you. Next item, Chief Secretary.
Item twenty-seven, consideration and action to award a contract for thirty-first year Community Development Block Grant Los Ventanas subdivision sidewalk construction project.
Can you just, can you just give us your recommendation?
I'd be more than pleased to do that, Mayor.
What's your recommendation?
Our recommendation is consideration and action to award a contract for thirty-first year CDBG Los Ventanas subdivision sidewalk construction project to our, and our paving of San Bonito, Texas, the low-responsive bidder, and that bid amount was sixty-nine thousand, six hundred and sixty-seven dollars and fifty cents.
I move to approve.
Second.
Motion seconded. Motion by Mr. Longoria, seconded by two people. Who's it?
I know.
Okay. Mr. Tri, Mr. Triani, Mr. Aggison. Triani, seconded the motion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed?
I abstain on this one, too, Mayor.
Mr. Snell's abstains on that one. Thank you. Next item, please.
Item twenty-eight, consideration and action to rescind contract awarded to Joey Ibarra Construction and award contractor, second low, second low bidder, Donald D. Ferguson, for stormwater treatment improvements for Garden Park Storm Sewer Project.
Honorable Mayor, Commissioners, I'll give you a little history on this particular case. On April third of two thousand and seven, the Brownsville City Commission awarded a contract to Joey Ibarra Construction for stormwater treatment improvements for Garden Park Storm Sewer Project for a total base bid amount of four hundred and thirty-five thousand plus, plus an additive alternate of thirty-one, almost thirty-two thousand, or a total bid amount of four hundred and sixty-seven thousand, six hundred and sixty dollars. On June eighth, two thousand and seven, the Purchasing Department received a letter from the project consulting year, engineer, Ambio Tech Group, that the contract awarded to Joey Ibarra should be recommended to the City Commission to be rescinded. And the reason for that is that Mr. Ibarra has been unable to do so performance bond under state statute. Any contract for this type of work above a hundred thousand dollars requires a performance bond, which is at one hundred percent of the value of the contract. Since that was not forthcoming, what we are recommending this evening is that we move to the second low bidder, which is Ferguson Construction. Ferguson has honored their original bid price, even though some time has elapsed, the amount of that is six hundred and sixty-four thousand, eight hundred and seventy-five dollars. It's considerably more than the original bid. There's some rationale in your packet as to why that is a little bit higher. If we, if we were to rebid this project at this time, Mayor, we anticipate that the bids would come in substantially higher than the six hundred and sixty-four thousand, so we are requesting that you go ahead and award this contract to Ferguson.
Move to approve?
I'll second.
Motion to rescind and to approve, okay? That's the way it's stated. Okay. Motion to approve by, and rescind and approve by Mr. Aggison, and seconded by.
Second, but Commissioner.
I just had a question, that's all.
Okay, what's your question? Who, who seconded it?
What's your question?
I seconded, Mayor. I made the second.
My question is, how much time?
Let me ask this question.
May I? How much time did we give Mr. Joey Ibarra to, to come up with this, uh, uh, performance bond?
We gave him a lot more time than what our specifications called for, sir. The Commission awarded the contract on April third. Here we are on July the third. The reason for the delay is we have been working with Mr. Ibarra to help him attain that performance bond, and he's been unable to do so.
Does he have any more time, or what?
I don't think it's more time, sir.
I think he, he voluntarily, uh.
Do we have something in writing, or?
Drew? He voluntarily withdrew? Okay. But we have a motion here to approve and a second, uh, by Mr. Camarillo seconded. Okay, Mr. Aggison made the motion.
Real, real quick. He volunteered, uh.
He, he came performing. But we need to get this project done. This is a, this is a drainage system that.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, motion carries. Uh, the public comments will be put at the beginning of the agenda from now on. Is there any public comments now?
There's one right here.
Okay. Please come forward, state your name. You're allowed, uh, how many minutes?
Three minutes.
Three minutes. The City Commission's not, not allowed to respond, okay?
This is an invitation. It's an invitation.
Mr. Omat, uh, Mayor Omat and fellow Commissioners, I'm here to invite you to our opening for our state tournament on Thursday at six o'clock in the afternoon at Dean Porter Park. And at the same time, I want to express my thanks to all the Commissioners, to the, the Citizen Convention Bureau, to Mr. Kabler, to Mr. Longoria, to all of you, because this, this project wouldn't have been able to be completed without the help of everybody. And this shows how Brownsville can come together and make a project like it is. Everybody's on the internet, all over, it's saying that they can't wait to come to Brownsville because it's supposed to be the tournament of tournaments. In nineteen ninety-three, we had the tournament, Mr. Mayor, and you happened to be the mayor at that time, when we had the state tournament. They're still talking about it, because we really put on the show, and we plan to put on a show this time. We hope that all of you can attend, and I'm very grateful to Mr. Young, who also alerted the media to this. I hope we do get a respond from the media, like, uh, we, we did compete, Austin, Dallas, and all this, all the other entities, and we got it, and without the help of all of you, Mr. Kabler and the Citizen Convention Bureau, we wouldn't have been able to do it. So thank you very much, gentlemen, and I hope to see you there on Thursday.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, do we have any, by speaking of public comments? Okay, please state your name. We got three minutes. Who's in charge of enforcing the three-minute rule?
Hold on, what? It's all right, Mayor, I think I can handle three minutes.
What's his name? What's your answer?
It's Grady Deaton. I'm here to speak about a subject that came up earlier, that the Mayor and his transparency and the rest of the council, the majority of the council, didn't want to hear the comments concerning WCF and, and the resolution pertaining to it. Gentlemen, it's ironic that tomorrow is July the fourth, the two-hundred-and-thirty-first anniversary of Declaration of Independence, and this commission has spent more time tonight talking about, discussing, and the concerns about the welfare and the concerns of stray animals than they were willing to discuss and listen about the rights of individual property owners. I do not own a WCF. I'm not intending to buy one, but I'm a private property owner, and I watched on, I believe it was the twenty-sixth of June, this commission. And then I watched again, because I didn't believe what I had watched the first time, and I noticed that it was a three, three tie, and the Mayor commented that he was going to vote with staff's recommendation. Well, I have to respectfully disagree with the Mayor. The staff made no recommendation. Mr. Gomez, with all due respect to Mr. Gomez, appeared like a deer caught in the headlights of an eighteen-wheeler in the middle of Highway seventy-seven on the Keen Ranch. He made no recommendation. Infringements of individual property rights giving the city unfair advantage and a supposedly free market. This action was taken without a market analysis. It was taken without a cost-benefit analysis. It was taken out without regards to risk or rewards. It was taken without an opinion for the Attorney General, and I can assure you, gentlemen, that it will be challenged. And it is going to cost the city money, and it's going to be an expensive process. AT&T, Nortel, Nextel, Sprint, Small Pocket Communications have a legal budget that almost would equal the hundred and twenty-five million dollar city budget. Also, I was disappointed to not see a review by wordage, by verbiage, of the San Antonio resolution that everybody referred to. I'm deeply concerned about the word requirement. And I'm going to back that up by giving you a little one-paragraph statement concerning private property rights given before the House Subcommittee on Judiciary by Roger Pelon, who is the Senior Fellow and Director for the Center for Constitutional Studies of the Cato Institute. The Fifth Amendment's taking clause reads, quote, "Nor shall private property be taken for public use without just compensation," unquote. As presently.
Your, your mistake, Rob.
Thank you, your time, and I share my disappointment, and I wish that each of you would take the time to seriously, seriously consider the actions that you've taken.
Thank you for your comments.
Happy Fourth of July, gentlemen.
You too.
You successfully.
Okay, we have a motion to adjourn.
Taxation without representation and abuse of private property rights.
Thank you. We have a second to adjourn?
Second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All those who are against, they can stay.